Father God, first of all, we thank you so much for the rain that we needed so much. Lord, we ask you to continue giving it to us in the rate that we can handle and in a way that would be good for the city. Keep everybody safe during this time. And, Lord, tonight, we thank you specifically for our mayor, city commissioners, our city manager, and all the staff, and we ask for supernatural wisdom for each of them. And as we discuss the budget and tax rates tonight, each of us have our own opinions, but at the end of the day, bring us together in unity, continuing to love each other and blessing each other, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
At this time, we're going to do a presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. This is not scripted, but I want to take some quick time, and I'm not sure if he's here. Was Bryant advised? Mr. Walker?
Okay, I don't see him in the room.
So in case he walks in late, just want to make sure that the public's aware, this flag came in today, and this is from Mr. Walker, who recently became an accredited airport executive. This is a big prestigious credential for him and his profession, and for us to have someone of this caliber at this important time in the airport is a big deal for us. So Bryant's not here, he's at a conference, but this came in today, it came in to me to present to him, so I felt this was a very appropriate way to recognize him. So when you do see him, please thank him for his service and his leadership for the city of Brownsville. Thank you.
Next, we have the public comment period. We do have one public comment registration for a non-agenda item for Ms. Priscilla Alvarez. If you would please come to the podium.
Yes. If you want to, you can pull the microphone closer to you, though.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you. My name is Priscilla Alvarez. I am the Executive Director for the Valley Initiative for Development and Advance -- excuse me, VIDA. For those that are not familiar with our program, we're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization with a 24-year history of assisting the economically disadvantaged adult population as they obtain post-secondary credentials in demand occupations only. Our role is to help them address the many barriers that they face as they attend school full-time, which is one of our requirements, because studies show that the types of wraparound services that our organization provides to them are critical to program completion. We are able to help this hard-to-serve population make it to graduation because we assist with financial assistance, but more importantly, with the supportive services and our intensive case management model. I handed out packages, a package to each of you that has lots of information, but I'll just give you a quick synopsis on each of them. One of them is our PACE study that was concluded, and we got the results March of this year. That study demonstrates that over a 24-month follow-up period, VIDA students that received our assistance are enrolling in college full-time at a greater rate. They're earning more college credentials, also, and they're obtaining more certifications and/or associate's degrees. Our educational effects were reported as being amongst the largest identified by random assignment studies of programs that promote successful completion of post-secondary education and training. Our findings were compared with the results from a recent evaluation of the University of New York ASAP program. ASAP provides a good comparison to our program because its effects have been described as the gold standard nationally. So comparing our results to theirs, as second to theirs only, is huge for our community and to our partners such as the city of Brownsville. There's also a short summary in your packets by the -- a summary of the Economic Mobility Corporation's nine-year study of our sister organization, Project Quest, in San Antonio. The reason I included it is because we were modeled after Quest, and their study revealed some important information. Their participants, their graduates, are earning more money, they're obtaining more skills, and they're actually working more hours than the control group that was compared over those nine years. The evaluator of that study was quoted, "To see earnings differences this large and for this long is unprecedented in the workforce development field." And we expect, our report should be out at the end of this year, if not early next year, our earnings gains, and we expect that our earnings gains will be just as good, if not better, than theirs. There was a recent article in the Rio Grande Guardian on economic development, and that article asked, "How do you provide a skilled workforce if you don't have the jobs, and how do you bring the jobs in if you don't have a skilled workforce?" It was suggested, and we agree, that we all have to become economic developers, I'm sorry. VIDA is economic development, and we're glad that the city of Brownsville and many other cities across the valley have agreed with that. By partnering with you, we're investing in human capital. We're preparing your adult population with skills and education to allow them to not only become self-sufficient and to be able to have more disposable income, but we're also helping our local employers to fill the needs that they have in the community. And what we've also found is that this adult population that we serve, they make great employees because they tend to stay in our communities. They don't move away as soon as they get their credential out of town or out of state. They tend to stay here in the valley. Helping people move from poverty to the middle class is not easy, and it's not a quick fix either. But a sustained effort and through partnerships like ours, we can help bridge that gap by continuing to serve your adult population that typically stays in our communities. This is accomplished by people moving off of public assistance and into family-sustaining career employment with that disposable income that enables them to shop and dine here locally. In your packet, there is also a one-page summary of where we're at so far during this fiscal year with funding that we actually receive through GIBIC, but we always present at the end of the year to the city. The benchmark for the money that we received from GIBIC was to serve 55 Brownsville residents. And we actually exceeded that benchmark, and we were able to serve 80 because we brought in a Veterans Grant and also a Texas ACE Grant. That ACE Grant requires a match, dollar for dollar. So because we have that and because we have funding from Brownsville, we're able to braid that funding and actually serve more without coming to you for more money.
You're actually way over time, so...
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. But that is included in your packet for you to see the wages earned.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have consent agenda items.
I would like to actually pull out quite a few of them from the consent agenda, some of the travel ones. Do I do them independently, or can we just... Okay. Actually, yours. Armando Ranget, Simone Ortiz, Christina Garza, and Martino Trevino. Then I would also have a question of letter I and M, if I can pull those out.
I and N?
M as in monkey.
Okay.
I, N?
M as in monkey.
Is there a line now?
That's it, at least for me. But I'll move to approve all the others.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the items with the exception of the ones that Commissioner Golanski asked to be taken up separately. Do I have a second?
Second.
No motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Motion carries.
Thank you. So if I may start my questions?
How would we take the subcouncil?
Individual consideration.
Okay, then, the first one is going to be attorney, the expenses?
Correct. It seems to me that this would be more appropriately funded with GIBIC funds, and so I'm just wondering why the city -- or, since it sounds like from the training that you're going to get is economic development, so it would be more appropriate for GIBIC to pay that travel expense, and I'm just wondering if it seems to me that the city's going to pay for it.
Okay. That's an item that has nothing to do with GIBIC. The government court requires that the city attorney, the city manager, and/or the city secretary get that training every two years. I'm taking that in my capacity as city attorney, and that is totally forgiven.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Me.
Okay. Motion carries. Next item would be the travel for Armando Ranget.
Correct. And he has asked for -- sorry. So I'm just curious. He's asked for $150 for taxi and then $60 for baggage, and I just wondered, is that common policy to do that?
Yes, so for this travel, it will be for a home, under the home grant, for a homebuyer assistance program. And so any funds that, if there's no use with taxi and so forth, that's returned, that's refunded. But normally, it's an estimate of, for baggage, it is because of the airline, and for taxi, it depends on how much travel will be needed onsite.
So I was just curious, because then others requested that, but it's because they're carrying exhibit materials. They'll be presenting an exhibit, and so I was just, it didn't seem like he was going to go present an exhibit.
That's correct.
Just since it's a two- or three-day trip, I was... And I'm being nitpicky, I'm just wondering what the policy is, and maybe we need to change policies or review them.
It has been customary for the request for taxi, and that's what we have. But we can elaborate further and provide the policy.
Okay.
In other words, that's not something that's fronted, right? Because as I understand it, there's a portion that's kind of fronted, and then as those expenses are incurred, then they ask for reimbursement. Is that correct?
That's correct. So there's portions that are fronted as far as for the meals and so forth, and there's others in reimbursement. It depends how it's set up.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. Then that's the only one for that one.
Do I have any motions?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is Simone Ortiz.
Let me see. He's going to San Antonio. Oh, he said that he might get a Techstat scholarship application, and so since the trip is next week, I just wondered if that came in through.
Yeah. I mean, yes, it's a Techstat application, and we will be submitting that application. They shut down the system for a while, but we got a letter from Techstat saying that we would submit the application this week, but it had been approved, and it has been approved by Techstat. So it'll be for the $1,117.15 that would be reimbursed back to the city for this travel.
Okay. Great. That's it. That's what I... Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is Christina Garza.
Sorry, it's because I wrote them down.
This is Hart?
Okay, yes. So, okay, so for them, then, so for this one, I understood, okay, well, they want Uber fare and baggage, but they're also carrying the stuff for a booth. And so I'm here like, okay, well, that one made sense, whereas the previous guy didn't seem like he was taking an exhibit. So I was just wondering if there's some sort of consistency or some rules, since I'm not familiar with the policy.
Typically, the policy requires that we pay the base airfare, and that depending on the air carrier, it may or may not include luggage. And so depending on the length of stay, it may be appropriate that he has clean clothes with him, so that's why the baggage would be paid. In this instance, it's both duration of stay and exhibit materials. They will be setting up a booth.
Okay. Great. Okay. Thanks. Thank you. So I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries? Last one, I believe, on the expenses is Martino Trevino.
Correct. And his is...
Just for clarification, all of these are reviewed by directors and stuff, right? So it's not like...
That is correct, which is why they typically speak to the request and have the details.
Okay. Okay. So this one, he says he's going to use a city vehicle, but then he's requesting for reimbursement for mileage. And I noticed that others who use city vehicles were not requesting reimbursement for mileage. So is there also a rule for that?
So we can double-check that. I don't have the request before me, but generally, if they use a city vehicle, they can't get mileage. They can't double-dip, so to speak.
Okay. And this is because I'm still new, and I don't know the policies, and we haven't been provided the policies, but I tried to find some consistencies, and that was what jumped out.
We can double-check that. I don't see him in the crowd here, but if that's the issue, the concern, we can make sure that we double-check and triple-check that.
Okay. Great. Thanks. So, subject to that, I will move to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries? All right, then, the next item then for individual consideration would be item I.
And that one is CDCB's request for rezoning. I saw them standing outside. I just wondered if they were still wanting to go forward with that, since we had enough...
I did send an email to Nick last week, CDCB on Friday, and they did not...
Who are you?
They did not express that they were not happy with that putting on the agenda. They would have expressed that to me, I believe, but it's something that the commission requested to be placed on the agenda, as it was the second reading.
Okay.
You already had approved the first reading of this item, so we could put it on consent because they had already gone through all the public hearings. And so I sent an email, he was fine with it, didn't express concern, and so that's why it's on your agenda for consideration.
And the only reason was because it was a year ago, and, well, I reached out to you just to confirm that that's what you wanted, but if that is the case, then I move to proceed. Okay. Thank you.
Is that a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion to approve, and I have a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I have to check.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries? Next item is item M.
Yes. And that one, I had previously voted against it, and so for that reason, I didn't want it to go on the consent agenda, or, you know, a blanket consent.
Okay. So on item M, this is 1464 Yale. Do we have any presentation, any additional information on that? I'm familiar with the item. Does anybody else need any additional?
That was the drive, I mean, the carport that went all the way to the...
Correct. Some of us voted against it, and some of us voted forward, so for that reason, I didn't want to do a blanket consent.
Okay. Do I have any motions to approve? This was approved at the last, well, maybe not the last commission meeting, but it has been, it was approved at a previous commission meeting. We have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. That would be an aye. Motion carries? Okay. Next would be public hearing.
Public hearing number one, public hearing to discuss the city proposed fiscal year 2020 budget.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, today I'll go over third presentation on the Today, we're going to be covering hotel occupancy tax, motor vehicle parking system fund, and streets and drainage. On the hotel occupancy tax, you have a packet up there which has the requests by the organizations that detail prior year requests compared to current year requests, and the increase and decreases on those individual requests. For this year, we're anticipating to increase hotel motel tax in about $100,000. Total hotel tax, $1,551,500. Interest earnings, total expenses, convention, tourism, this amount is going to be the city's administrative cost to administer the hotel motel tax. Nonprofit organizations, $992,890. I'll give you a detail, or actually, the details on front of you, and then transfer to general fund, $64,000. This is to cover 50% of the marketing and advertising director in general fund. The right-hand side, you'll see, on the left-hand side gives you previous year's requests, and the right-hand side gives you current year requests. Notably, you'll see Gladys Porter Zoo has a slight decrease on there. The other notable amount is that Brownsville Museum of Fine Arts has requested a $25,000 increase. This is due to increase in other operations. And one of the notable increases on here is the Gorgas Science Foundation or Sable Palms. This is a new request that we're considering and proposing for bringing to your consideration One of the things to note here is we are spending more, we are actually dispersing more than the funds that we'll be getting from the hotel motel taxes, but that's because we have a reserve fund balance on there of about...
Luca, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but is the zoo okay with a loss this year?
That's what I was going to ask, too. Is that what they requested?
They received extra funds. That's what they requested. Actually, what happened last year...
The dinosaurs?
Usually, they get about $400,000. Usually, they get about $400,000 a year. Last year, they had an increase of about $150,000. That's to help them with the dinosaur exhibit. Since that dinosaur exhibit is no longer being used, they wanted to reprogram some of those funds to continue some of their operations, and they wanted, they requested to retain the majority of the $150,000, a little bit less than that, $536,000.
So no more dinosaurs and no more new exhibit?
Well, I'm talking to Dr. Bertrill. Apparently, that gets cycled. I think they have to wait about three years or so, or something to sometime limit before they could bring the exhibit again. And again, going back, there is an amount of about $47,000 that we're actually requesting in addition, actually nexus of what's being collected, but we have a fund balance on there in that account of about $400,000 that we'll use to fund this funding for these requests. Have any questions on that?
Yes. You'd stated that the total money that came in from hot taxes was over, it was 1.5 million? A little bit more? $1,551,000?
That's what we're projecting for next year.
Okay. So then, the difference between that and the $992 that's being requested, where is that?
That is convention tourism administrative fund, the $540,000.
Uh-huh.
That's the administrative cost the city's going to incur, plus $64,000 that is going to fund 50% of the advertising and, what was the name of the...
Because it's typically CVB salaries and administration, but my understanding is that there's nobody there now, so...
Well, there isn't anybody, so there's still costs.
We're trying, yes, absolutely, Commissioner O'Gallan. We are hiring, in the process right now of hiring a new communications and marketing director which would handle CVB. I think that's something that we need in the city in terms of telling your story, or telling all the story of what the city is doing, supporting our hotel operators. And so there's going to be this whole business plan and staffing. We have two part-time staffers at the visitors bureau. There's some upkeep that needs to be done in that building. We've done a recent facility study on that building, and so we want to make sure that there's some storage stuff, painting, molds, and stuff that we're taking care of, and so we really need to get that building into shape as part of that, just that funding would be allocated towards doing some of that as well. It's more cosmetic.
Not to mention the very out-of-date software.
No, I mean, I just want to make sure that all the money is being used for that, because I know the hoteliers are very critical of the way the money's spent, so I'm asking it now before they do.
Well, the good thing is that we budget for it, but if it doesn't get spent, it actually stays there in the fund balance. That's why we've actually had an estimated fund balance of about $450,000 of unspent funds. So we make sure that any funds that are not spent stay within the fund and are used appropriately.
I'm just sad the zoo is losing money.
Luca, one question that I had was that, there was a question maybe about a year ago, I remember I asked you, there was a suggestion that maybe some of the hotels had not been up to date with their payments of hot funds, and is that clarified and everyone's up to date?
No, there's one hotel that's not up to date. We contract our collections with the administrative company to take care of that for us, but there is one company that is in arrears that is catching up with their payments on there.
And we have a process to cover, to, we have a process to collect that?
Yes, we do.
Like, you know, there's like, how long are they allowed to be late, and what happens if they are, and so on and so forth?
I don't have the actual procedures on there, but there are procedures on there that we, after a certain period of time, we need to refer them to legal department for a collection process.
Do they pay late fees?
Yes, they do pay late fees. Second item, the motor vehicle parking system fund request, we're bringing this item up. Total revenues collected of motor vehicle parking system, about $573,000. About 66 is covered by parking meters. Overparking, about 20%, miscellaneous, 3%, and parking lot rentals, about 3% and $20,000. Total expenditures related to the operations, you have 34% for personal parking enforcement, 21% for personal parking operations, maintenance of building, 13%, maintenance and supply, 7%, miscellaneous, 6%. One of the items on there you'll see is downtown improvement restricted account. This is the amount of money that has been accumulated throughout the years that is designated for downtown improvements. We're putting a line item budget in here. Is this only a placeholder? These funds could only be used for improvements in a downtown area. That item still has to come to you, but we're just setting up a budget, so whenever there is a need to use those funds for particular downtown improvements, there's already a budget, it's just an item that they bring to you to request those funds to be used.
Was this on that PowerPoint that y'all sent earlier around four o'clock? Somebody sent out a PowerPoint. That's on there?
Actually, this was not sent out to you, I'm sorry. There was a, part one and part two was what got sent out to you for reference. This is, I guess, the third part of the budget. This is fairly new, yes. We just...
If you'll send me that, please.
Absolutely. Great. Any questions? Right now, we're going to talk about streets and drainage. I'm going to turn it over to our engineering department to cover the...
My name is Dorado Garcia with the engineering department. I'm going to start off with the street reconstruction. This is what we have budgeted per district for full reconstruction, and this will include sidewalks, curb and gutter, and full replacement of the asphalt and probably base, maybe some subgrade. It depends on street to street. In District One, we're proposing to complete the following streets. As you can see on your screen, it's Chaparral Street, Marvis Drive, San Pedro Lane, Elsa Street, and Avenida de la Plata. We have a map showing those streets and the limits of the streets for a total of 1.5 million. In District One, we've distributed the funds pretty evenly throughout the districts to where we can get the most benefit. In District Two, we are focusing on Portway Street, East 11th Street, East 12th Street, El Valle Drive... El Valle Drive, Grande Boulevard, and Lourdes Boulevard. As you can see, most of the ones in El Valle are the major subdivision collectors for the area, which are the streets that are more heavily used for full reconstruction. You'll see later on in the presentation, in the maintenance portion, we will have most of the streets that are the ones that lead to these streets that will be rehabbed in those areas. In District 3, we're working on Jose Marti, Jeanette Lane, Calle Norteña, Res Drive, and Woodruff Avenue. You can see on the map the limits of these streets. In District 4, there's a little bit less streets because some of these streets are a little bit longer, but they're definitely very well-needed. It's Calle Espacio, Calle Galaxia, West Los Cebanos, and El Mar Street. Both El Mar, Los Cebanos, all of these streets are a lot longer than the other ones. That's why there's less streets that are being done in District 4. And you can see the amount of money in District 4 is a little bit more, just to make sure we have enough to complete these segments of streets. I don't know if y'all want to answer questions, or if y'all have any questions on the reconstruction portion?
I have a question. You said that, if that's okay?
Sure.
You said that sidewalks, curbs, and gutters, are you saying that all of these streets will have sidewalks, or only repairing if they do have a sidewalk?
These streets, we will include sidewalk construction. If the sidewalk's damaged, it'll get repaired. If it doesn't have sidewalk, we will install sidewalk.
What about complete streets? Will any of, are any of them complete streets with the addition of a bike lane as well?
Yes. Yes, there's, I will get back to you on exactly what streets have bike lanes and which ones don't. I'm not familiar with those details.
Yeah, typically, Commissioner, when we do reconstruction, we make it a complete street, as per the policy. We group bike lanes, sidewalks on both sides, new curbs and gutters and everything.
And do you, do you know what our store is for the armadillos?
What are...
In other words, do we have them in stock, or do we need to reorder?
We have some in stock, but we're probably going to be, have to reorder pretty soon. Yeah. We do have some in stock.
We just replace them on...
Yes.
So, I hope that you'll work with Eva to decide where we can use them in all of those lovely streets?
Absolutely, yes. We work pretty well with her, and we'll get whatever we need to address.
Those would be part of the budget for the reconstruction anyway, right?
Yes.
The armadillo? Okay. And how do you prioritize, how do you actually come up with the streets that need to be done?
We have a street rating survey that was completed in 2014, 15. We rely on that mainly. Second is the number of complaints we get from neighborhoods, but mainly on the PCI rating is how we rate them. And then, we try to, you know, if we have some that are within close proximity of each other, we try to group them with the contracts to where it makes sense, that they're advertised to bring us the most bang for our buck, basically. We don't want to spread streets out as far apart from each other. We try to group them pretty close so where it's easier to save on mobilization costs and maximize, unfortunately, or unfortunately, we have more streets that need repair than what we have funding for. So, we try to maximize the use of our funding.
Do you get any input from the residents on prioritization?
It's not too common. Most of the time, it's based strictly on the, since we have so many streets that we need, it's based on the rating.
And the rating includes how much is actually used, like traffic on that street?
It includes traffic volumes and the condition of the street versus, you know, how much money it takes to get the street back up to a fair or good condition.
Did you mention something about complaints in there?
Yes. Well, we do, I mean, we have a log of complaints that get called into the call center.
Can you factor that in?
We take that into consideration at times. I mean, most of the streets, as you can see here, they're major collectors or minor collectors. You don't see neighborhood streets that are being done. There are some neighborhood streets, but most of them are your collectors. The few neighborhood streets you do see are streets that we've neglected for many years, mainly in the downtown areas, West Brownsville.
So, other than the complaints, is there another process for them to request, like what the mayor said, for their street to be done, or...
Usually, 546 Help is the most common one. 546 Help, that's where we get most of our requests from. You know, they'll reach out to public works, engineering, or other departments.
I think it would be helpful in the future that we include that data in this type of presentation, that the number of complaints, you know, per street, so we can see really what the community is saying about, you know...
No, definitely. We can definitely do that.
And maybe even photos, so that we can, you know, just see...
To see the actual condition of the roads, yeah.
In my district, though, if you can switch back to District 1, I'm glad that Chaparral is on top, but 25th, which gets you to Chaparral, is all, 26th, sorry, which is, gets you to Chaparral, is also in great need. So, how can you justify just doing Chaparral but not 26th?
Well, the 26th is part of, it's going to be covered under our maintenance portion. It doesn't need full reconstruction. It'll be done under maintenance monies.
At the same time, or...
More than likely. More than likely, it'll be done at the same time, because it's been, on the maintenance budget, if you let me present that, it doesn't have the streets yet, because we've been still going back and forth with the amount of funding we're going to have. But the list of streets that we've discussed has, does include 25th, 26th, and 27th. Any other questions regarding reconstruction? On the street maintenance portion, we basically have, you know, a million dollars per district, and we've been, this is the one we've been, you know, going back and forth with as to how much funding we're going to end up having. What we've presented to you today is a million dollars per district, and we have the miles. We still don't have the actual streets prepared, because we're waiting to see where we end up with the full reconstruction, so that we can group the streets, like I said, you know, where we get the most benefit for our reconstruction. Originally, this was being planned with $7 million. So, we have plenty of streets, once again, you know. Now, we've reduced it, so we need to reclassify what streets we do with which projects as part of the contracts. But the idea is that we're going to be doing anywhere between three to four miles in street maintenance. What street maintenance means is either going to be pothole repairs, not a patch, pothole repair, where we'll actually saw cut a portion and do a full repair of a section of a street, or we're going to do a mill where we remove the asphalt, the drive, driving surface of the road, and come back and pave it. We will do minor curb work. If the curb is damaged, it's usually minor, and minor improvements on some driveways. On the sidewalk, if there's a sidewalk that needs to be repaired, we will repair it while we're there. If there is no sidewalk, it gets put on the sidewalk budget. If there's budget, we'll come back and do sidewalks. Mainly, this is focused on bringing our streets that are in, before they're dropping to a poor condition, to maintain a fair street. So, we're doing a lot more on the preventive maintenance side to keep our streets from deteriorating. That's what we're focusing on now.
What's the timeline on you deciding which streets you all are going to be...
It's within the next few days.
I have issue with District 2 receiving one mile less than everybody else. And I'm sure there's a calculation reason for it, but I just think that it's...
Yeah, usually, the number's probably because we've picked a street that's in the lower tier of condition, and it needs a lot more funding. You know, on average, the cost per mile's anywhere between about $200,000 on the low end to as much as $300,000, $400,000, $500,000. So, on District 2, I can ensure when we look at the streets, you're probably going to see it's one of the roads that needs a lot more curb work, and we just feel it's an important street. That's probably why it's a little bit less, and you can see the broad range between them.
Mr. Norejo, once you get that information, once you determine the actual streets maintenance that you're going to be doing, is that something that'll be provided to us? That way, Commissioner Tetro can see that for our district?
It would probably be a part of the next budget item, or the next budget agenda that we present. It'll have the final list as to what streets we're going to do, and how they're going to be grouped as either for contracts or for in-house construction.
Doesn't that go on the website also, to let people...
Yes. Yeah, definitely. And I mean, now with the department we have in hand to help us market or sell our plan, tell our story a lot better, you'll definitely see it on our website. I'm sure we'll have email publications. One of the things we're also improving on is the notifications to the homeowners. Before, we relied a lot on the contractors to do that for us. Now, we're letting the contractors do that as well, but as the city itself, we're going out and informing the public to make sure that the notifications are given out. So, we definitely have a lot more publicity than what we were accustomed to in the past. And I believe that, I'll let David take over for the drainage portion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment, Mayor Commission members, on the streets. So, Doro mentioned that in 2014, that was the last PCI study, so as part of the 2019 budget. We also have funds set aside to update that. Typically, that's supposed to be updated every five to seven years. So, we want to have better data to work on for the next year. So, if the commission wants to have a more detailed workshop on how they go about selecting streets, there is a science to it, but also, when we have more accurate data, that would be a good time to also walk you through, okay, how are we going to allocate funds now based on that new 2019 set of information?
Thank you.
Mayor Commissioner David Lee Cohen with the Engineering Department as well. I just want to present what projects were going to be included in our Texwater Development Board Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan that we're applying for, and kind of give you a general update on where we're at in that process. We have submitted the application, we have been approved, preliminary approved. We're waiting for it to go in front of the board, which would be in November. It got shifted back a couple of weeks due to some agenda constraints. But we should be receiving our formal awarding letter in the next couple of weeks to say that we are on agenda. It does look, everything looks fine, and the projects have been approved. Just pending commission's final approval to start doing the close-out documents. With the setback, we're looking at doing the earliest for closing on the loan would be in January, February of next year, so we start moving forward on projects. So, the first project that we're looking at is, of course, the Southmost Water Plain Park. Unlike streets, I kind of want to give you a little bit of video just to zoom in, because drainage is a lot bigger of a scope, and I can't do it on a smaller picture. So, I kind of just wanted to zoom in where we're at for the parks, just so you can kind of see what we're looking at. This, of course, is going to affect the Four Corners area. You kind of see that the water park is nestled right beside the detention pond that we've got taken care of with the Four Corners funding for GLO. Right now, it's going to isolate the North Main Drain from Four Corners and be kind of that showcase project for Texwater Development Board, so we can keep moving forward in the future. We are looking at adding the three parks, as previously mentioned in previous commissions. One of those parks would be a splash pad that we can resurface the water and use it, go back into our drainage system, so it will be unchlorinated, so that it won't be meeting all TCEQ requirements. The project is going to be about $2.85 million, or $2.8 million, and that is going to be a split between the city putting in some of our CIP funds, which include design. We went that route so that we can maximize the funding that we're getting from this loan to be purely construction dollars and not so much into design and planning. The city will be offsetting some of that with city funds from our staff, as well as some design consultants to get that work completed.
David, is that Porter, is that track Porter?
That is. We're right at Porter.
So, does that park intersect with the Southmost Nature Trail?
Yes, it does. So, we are connecting with that trail. If you're familiar with the Southmost Black and High Trail, there's a pergola that's sitting right at the, where we cross over the canal. You'll basically be extending that walkway, that trail, to be go around this new park system, and then connect where we originally wanted the trail to connect, right in the center of the detention pond. So, a couple more accesses to get in and out of there. This will also include a parking lot, which was previously not able to implement because of budget constraints. We are looking at doing pervious concrete, or not pervious, asphalt, or some type of green infrastructure lead-type build on this. Okay?
Very nice.
Any other questions on this one? The next one is a new add, is the Impala pump station. We all are familiar, hopefully, are familiar with where Impala is. I wanted to kind of outline the watersheds that it's affecting, but realistically, Impala is, does affect the entire city when it comes to drainage, because it is the main outfall for North Main Drain. So, zooming into it, you kind of see our structure here. Unfortunately, I didn't put a picture on here, but we were able to talk to a few vendors, and we got in contact, Doro and I got in contact with the original vendor's father or son, that had pictures of 1968, when he did the original installation for Impala, and it looks almost similar, except there's a little house now on top of a little shed. So, it was really cool pictures. I'll show that to you on the next one. But this is going to be a project to install four new pumps, and that's going to be the main workhorse for the city as far as drainage goes. We are going to integrate some modernization to those pumps, which would be SCADA, which is remote activation for the pumps, as well as to record efficiencies that are going on during when the pump is on, how much water's going out, if it needs to slow down a little bit to be not cavitate, which means basically there's not, there's enough water for it to push out. We're going to do some expansion to the pit. If you see the land that's directly, picture east, the little track that's right here that worked, that's also city property that we do own. And our plans are to expand the pit, so that when you expand the pit, basically gives you more water for the pump to work more efficiently. So, that's kind of the goal for this one. COB is going to be, their portion is 255,000, and then Texwater Development Board is 2.4 million, is kind of the offset. And we're going to do the same thing. We're going to split some consulting costs and some in the city design, kind of, we'll determine that in the next couple of months, figuring out what's best for the city. Any questions on this one?
Yeah, has there been any coordination with PB? Because I know I asked a question about this particular pump station when they were presenting the Restore Act funding project?
Yes.
Because I know this is a priority for the city. So, is there, has there been coordination with PB, at least to let them know that the city's going to move forward on this, so that they don't do it on their portion?
Yes. So, this was a last-minute input into this. It was a study previously, but due to some constraints with their legal and how they're doing the funding, we were having to take out the study that was first incorporated with USGS with this money, so we put in Impala. And we have talked to PB, and we're going to continue those conversations, because we are going to fund it now.
Okay, good. Yeah, because I think it was towards the end of their timeline, so...
Correct.
Mayor, and I think that, that's your point, the fact that they were, they included Impala, but in phase four, like a 15-year plan, and that there's a critical point in terms of this needs to be repaired, I think, for safety reasons now, and so that's always to be included.
But we will have conversations with them. Since we're taking that project out of the Restore Grant, what can maybe be put into that to help us out? Any other questions on this one?
There was talk a few years ago about the need for a second drainage, a drain into the river, besides Impala. Is that still on the list somewhere?
It's an outfall that's further down. That is, talks to renovate that one, but at a further time, just because we have so much capacity and the detention that's, that's the outfall. So, basically, we're talking about this section. It kind of looks like a liver going out that way. But there's a lot of capacity. I know, I think the plan was ideally first to start opening, widening that detention pond to open up some more capacity, but we want to limit how much water goes into the river, just because of regulations and all that other.
Thank you.
Any other questions? The next project is the SCADA and Covert Improvement. We have multiple areas that are going to affect multiple watersheds across the city and almost touch every electoral district. The idea, I went too far. It's not going to go now. So, all the green dots are the coverts that we're going to be affecting, we're going to be working through. And when I start to talk about a covert improvement, it's either a weir, some type of structure that slows down water to get downstream. The idea of putting SCADA and some sensors on there is that we're going to open up the infrastructure that we have of data coming into the city. With sensors at every one of these locations, I'll be able to tell what type of rainfall fell in that area, how fast the water's moving, if it's going upstream as opposed to downstream, and then we can be a lot more coordinated when we have these flooding events and how we do the response back. And I think this data is going to be crucial in any type of emergency management system. Fire, we're able to tell which roads are flooded, if there's flooded roads, and we can kind of get out to those areas. But more importantly, the structures themselves will be repaired, because they're pretty dilapidated in their areas. So, city's portion is about 85,000, and Texwater Development Board is about $1 million. This will include the new software that's needed to control these automations in these gates, as well as for the censoring technology that's going to be put into these areas.
Are any of those culverts tall enough to allow kayakers to go underneath? Or are they low?
No, these are low culverts. These are, they're basically just the small weirs that limit. If any of you are familiar, I guess the easiest one to convey is behind Lone Star Bank on 802. There's a little gazebo, it's this really small culvert, you can barely walk past it. It's just a small weir. Any other questions on that one? Last one is West Brownsville Drainage. The idea of this one is to help alleviate some of the flooding that's in West Brownsville. The yellow area is the area that's affected with some of these, this flooding and the watershed. The number four on the little marker is where the project plan is going to be occurring. That took a weird angle down. The red line is basically, we're going to do a bypass. Previously, the water would have to go up East Street, would have to go up this way, and then go across, and then come down to the pumps. It's just some of, some of the effects that we have from a city that's 150 years old, just different drainage ideas from the past. We're trying to correct some of those and put a bypass for the water to go straight into the pump system, so that it'll alleviate a lot faster.
What areas is, where does that yellow portion start? Because the flooding really does start, I guess, on St. Charles.
Okay. So, Palm is basically what we're looking at, this is the area from Palm West, is the area that we're alleviating, we're trying to work toward alleviating. It's a complex issue. We have to eventually rework some of Palm Boulevard, because that kind of is the funnel that's messing with some of the drainage. Um, so eventually one of our plans with some other funds is to fix Palm Boulevard, put the drainage to go positively toward Hope Park, which was funded through CDPG funding and bring all that water toward the pumps as opposed to away from it into a Saka system.
So it's Palm West, but on what streets?
Um.
Would it be Elizabeth back towards Fronton or where are we talking?
It's Elizabeth, I wish you had this map working now.
Mayor, regarding the St. Charles flooding, this, this will probably help it, it's not going to fix it. Uh, we, we do, we do have some plans for a future project to do, uh, actual covert improvements for all of St. Charles from Palm. It's down almost about six or seven blocks that need to get resized in order to help alleviate the flooding in that particular area you're mentioning.
Thank you. So like I said, most of the flooding issues in downtown are complex. It's, we can't just do one project to fix majority of them. So this is just the first step into that larger picture. The city Brownsville portion of that is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. Texas Water Development Board is one point two million dollars for this area. And that area affects about three hundred acres, which sounds like a lot, but realistically it's kind of a small fraction of what we're looking at. Any other questions? Uh, here's just kind of a graph showing where it is. And I apologize, there's a discrepancy at seven million dollars, not seven point two. Um, and it just must be an older slide from the last budgets. So I wanted to really quickly, um, tell you that we do have projects that we've been implementing and some of the commissioners may remember, we've done some sensors using some GLO funds in the past. And I wanted to give you a really high level, um, explanation of what those sensors have been doing because they have been in operation for about two years now. So, um, we have four different sites and four different sites around the city. Here's VICC, uh, this is South Laredo, North Laredo, and then Kumquat is a street kind of at the, at the termination of the Saka system. Each one of those sites have seven different sensors that are telling, are feeding this information every five minutes. Um, and the only way we're able to do that is we hardwire them to electricals because batteries would run out really fast. So every five minutes we've been getting information back on what the Saka system is doing. We position them in this portion of the city because we know that there's a really big bottleneck and a lot of flooding has been intended to happen on the west side of Brownsville, on this portion. So for the past two years, we have been recording that information coming in. Um, and what we've been able to use that with is we're starting to be able to, to, kind of what I mentioned with the last one, with the coverts and the SCADA improvements, using data to drive how we, how we manage emergency response, how we effectively do new engineering projects. And I just wanted to let you know that they are working very effectively. We haven't released them to, quite to the public yet because we need, we're working on a new platform to be able to do that. Um, so it's really just been a large Excel sheet that we've been getting lots of information on. But, uh, we have, um, seen that even in the last rains where we got one inch and, um, everybody starts fearing that's going to rain a lot. All the, all of our system has kind of normalized without much effect. We didn't need to turn on very many pumps, we didn't need to open up the system for it to accept more water. Um, so we're trying to be a lot more targeted in how we do our, our movements for emergency management before we start letting water out or have a big fear that we're going to have flooding. This is still in its infancy, but it is a new part that we're trying to go with. And I would like you to note that most of the state is now trying to do this, what we've been doing with sensor and SCADA information. Okay, any other questions? Sorry, I, it's a lot of information. Thank you.
Thank you. That was for you, Brett.
It's a public hearing.
It's a public hearing, is there anybody from the, that would like to comment?
All right. First of all, I want to thank you for that presentation. Uh, I think that shows what we're doing for drainage and that, that is, I think, one of the most important things in the city. Uh, when you have your car flooded or your house flooded, uh, all the other nice things going on in the city don't really matter at that moment. And these are the essential things and I'm glad to see we're addressing those. Uh, and it, I appreciate the, the things that we are doing in the city, that the projects we're doing, I, I know need to be, uh, maintained. Uh, as far as any new projects, again, I, I just encourage us to focus on the most important things, the citizens of Brownsville, the, the drainage, the streets, the public safety. And, uh, I, I thank God we have a, a grants department and let's wait for the grants for the, the extra stuff. Uh, and I'm not just talking about grants from one city, uh, department to another, but grants that come to Brownsville from outside. And, uh, hopefully our grants department can, can do that for the extra things that we want. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Uh, continue public hearing for next meeting.
We have one more.
One more. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you, Linda Montemayor. Hello, everybody. Um, I was here at the last meeting and I left out a few things. Um, I've been around a very, very long time. And I would like to see this city move forward. I do not like all of the special interest things that have happened during the past. Industrial parks that don't get anybody in them, other projects that don't get anybody in them, tax dollars or abatements for things that never happen, like Titan. Um, as I said, I go by that industrial park every day, just about empty. And the Gomez Park, I don't know who that land belonged to, I don't know why that park got put there, but nobody's out there most of the time. And then, um, I was surprised that PU B helped put in an installation competition against themselves out on five eleven. Why was that allowed? I don't understand a lot of these things and I would like to see it stopped. And then this tax raises, as he pointed out, a lot of it's going in on the commercial, right? I know one man, he's got this small property, it's a commercial property. It was appraised at four hundred thousand until this year. Guess what? It's in a dead area of the city, but it went up to a hundred thousand in value. This is another thing that is so wrong. We didn't have an appraisal district until the sixties. Some smart guy said, because there was a cap on what could be raised on taxes. Some smart guy said, oh, we know how to fix that, we'll make an appraisal district. We don't raise taxes, we just get them to raise the values. And this is what they've done this year, ridiculously so on so many properties. People cannot keep paying this, they're going to lose their businesses, they're going to close them. Do we want this in Brownsville? Do we want it to be that, really that negative of an impact on everybody? And every taxing agency, what are there, about six of them now? Everybody wants to raise their taxes, drainage district, school district, navigation district, college, city, county, name it. It can't keep going, it just can't. Everybody's going to have to tighten their belt, not just the citizens.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Anyone else?
Now, this is on the, on the portion we discussed, or is this going to be on the tax item as well?
On the tax.
Okay, you want to take that up or you want, that hasn't been presented yet, right, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, that'll be the next item.
The next item, can I just talk?
Yeah, sure.
It's going to be for the next item. My name is Adriana Montemayor. I'm here, I was here last week and I wanted to mention that I saw a chart. I'm not a commercial, but I'm a resident, I have a private property. But they were like so happy, saying how the chart went way up on the commercial. I'm like, is this for real? Ridiculous. Not only do we have to worry about our property taxes, we have to worry about the, those businesses that we have here, they're going to start closing. I have a friend that it went from two hundred thousand, their appraisal, to six hundred thousand. Who can afford that? That's ridiculous. No more taxes. I'm not worried about my federal taxes, I'm worried about my city here in Brownsville. Our property taxes, they're ridiculous. We need to do something about it. No more taxes. The city and all the other entities here in Brownsville need to figure out a way to cut expenses. Not everything can be done, maybe in one year or the second year, just organize. But we're not, I, I said and I'm saying it again, we're not, you know, the residents are not a piggy bank that grows money on trees. We don't, we're also hurting. No more income from the bridges, well, we're hurting too. So no more taxes. Figure out, the heroic thing to do and the correct thing to do is to figure out where to cut corners so that the residents of Brownsville can have a break. No more taxes, no more taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion to close public hearing?
Sure.
Motion to close public hearing?
This is a.
Continue.
Oh, motion to continue the item until next week?
Second. You're talking about the one that was just presented then?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, uh, any further discussion? Those in favor?
What was the motion?
To continue the discussion next week.
Oh.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you.
Item number two.
Next we have a second public hearing to discuss the city proposed property tax rate for tax year twenty nineteen and fiscal year twenty twenty.
Honorable Mayor, City Commissioners, uh, this is a second public hearing to discuss a possible tax rate increase. Um, again, this is required anytime that we propose a tax rate above the effective tax rate or the rollback rate, we must have two public hearings. Uh, the effective tax, the calculated effective tax rate was point six six one three seven four. The, the amount is broken up into two sections, the MNO, which is a general fund, and the debt, which of course is a debt service interest and sinking fund. This rate raises the same amount of property taxes, revenues from the, from the same properties in both twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen. If this rate, this rate will result in a, almost a two point four million dollar shortfall from our projected revenues. Current tax rate that we have right now is point seven zero zero six one three. This is a rate that balances a general fund bu, bu, budget. The MNO on that one, the maintenance operation, how much goes into the general fund is point four four five four three one cents. That's the amount that gets a portion to the general fund to continue operations. The percentage of the tax increase over the effective rate is five point nine three percent. This rate has, uh, this is the same rate since fiscal year twenty twelve or for nine years already. The rollback rate is calculated at point seven one eight nine one two. This, this is a rate that the, the, this is the highest rate the city may adopt before borders are entitled to a rollback option, rollback petition. This, uh, tax increase over the effective rate by eight point seven zero percent. Total, uh, for the maintenance operation, forty-six thirty-seven thirty. This, this amount, we, we, we've never actually gone to the rollback rate. We've always been a very conservative state at the current rate or less than that. But usually we've stayed on that, on that amount. Yes, it does increase revenues for the city, tax revenues, and that's because the appraised values go up, same tax rate, appraised values go up. Why do we need this? There's always needs, the city, there's amounts of cities that, there's a, a lot of needs in the city, but not enough resources. This is the only, this is the only, uh, this is, this is one of the only ones that the city has control in revenues. The other one is sales tax. Again, that's, that's the amount that's by, by economic, if you have economic times, you have good sales tax increases. Then downturn around in the economic, your, your sales tax decreases. So these are the two major revenue sources the city has in order to co, continue, uh, operating services, maintaining services. Uh, this, this gives you a, uh, for, for each half cent increase in the tax rate, it'll tell you how much money will generate it. So every half, every half, uh, cent increase above the current rate gives you about three hundred and five thousand dollars. A penny gives you about six hundred and eleven thousand dollars that would go to the general fund. If you, if you approve the effective tax rate, it actually decreases our, our projected revenues by two point four million dollars. Uh, this is, uh, this is the average taxable value of a residential homestead in Brownsville. Last year, the, the average value was ninety-three thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. This year ninety-seven thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars. If the effective tax rate gets approved, there's a decrease of about thirty, thirty-eight dollars and forty cents to the average, uh, home, uh, home site owner. Uh, if you approve the current tax rate, there, there is no increase from last year's taxes, uh, other than if your appraised value goes up, of course. And the rollback rate would actually increase seventeen dollars and eighty-three cents. Uh, this is a, a pie graph of the different taxing jurisdictions for tax year twenty nineteen. If you see city of Brownsville is, uh, taxed about twenty-six percent. Uh, the majority is, uh, the school district and, uh, and the county household makes about sixteen percent. There's other taxing jurisdictions on there. One of the big items that we, that we have to take into account is the Senate Bill Two. What happened on this Senate Bill Two is the effective, uh, excuse me, the rollback rate. This is a rate that the max that, that we could raise, that, that was rolled back to three point five percent. So in, in this case, if the, if the, if this bill was in effect this year, instead of a rollback being at seventy-one eighty-nine twelve, it would actually be point sixty-nine thirty-one oh five, would actually lose about four hundred and eighty-two thousand in our revenues. So we'd have to decrease our expenditures in order to meet service levels that we have. So any, any, any decreases in our revenues would have to go into our service levels that, uh, we, we use these revenues to provide. Um, this is a public hearing.
Yeah, so going back to the previous slide, so does that mean that next year we'll, we'll be feeling a deficit and so we'll have to cut back significantly?
It, it depends, uh, see, the, the rollback rate is only effective on current property. New property, it doesn't affect their new property growth. But if there's any appraisals on new properties, it will affect the amount that we're able to, uh, to, to approve at the rate. So if we have the same increase like we have this year, of two point one million dollars in our property tax roll or, or, or tax roll increases significantly, we, we might be in this, in this particular, particular next year. It depends, again, there's, there's, on the appraisals, excuse me, on the rollback, um, and the tax rules, there's two portions of it. There's tax roll for new property coming in, that doesn't affect us. On the existing property, it does affect us. If there's reappraisals of those properties increases, then it does affect the rollback rate.
So the PowerPoint that we sent you all at four, that was a combination of the first two workshops. In presentation number two from last week, there's, and that should be in your tablets, there's this, that peak chart. That shows what occurred this tax year in terms of the reappraisal for industrial commercial. But what it does is it shows you two lines, uh, growth to existing tax base and then net raw growth. The formula applies to any growth to your existing tax base, not new growth. So that, that chart shows that we've been about just under two percent for new growth. We've also been about two percent for existing growth, uh, year over year. Starting next year, we can't go above three point five percent for any existing properties on the tax roll, but any new growth is not a part of that formula. Is that, is that helpful?
Not really, but that's okay.
So for example, Lupe mentioned, Lupe, if you go back to the prior slide, uh, the one that has the five point nine three percent, uh, growth. Here, uh, is it this slide? Yes, right here it says, uh, so there's a five point nine three percent increase, right? That's the cumulative increase between any growth to properties on the existing tax roll and any growth coming from new growth, new development. So that includes both. In the other slide, it breaks up to five point nine three between existing growth and new growth.
But again, my question is, and you probably didn't answer it, I just didn't get it. So next year, when this ceiling goes into effect, is it going to significantly impact our expenses to the point where we're going to feel it a lot worse next year?
It will, again, but it's contingent on the appraisals, the appraisals. If the appraisals have that, that big increase, it will help, it will decrease.
But how can that happen, our, the appraisal district that really doesn't have a justification for increasing so high again next year, like they did this year?
But I'm just, I'm just trying to validate. If, if there, that, if there is not that, that increase, we shouldn't have this issue next year. We shouldn't have where our, our cap is less than our current rate. I don't anticipate that our cap amount would be less than our current rate, as long as the appraisal districts don't have that peak. Again, justifying, that's, that's appraisal districts. We, we, we don't have a say on what the appraisals is. They're a separate entity, uh, established by, by the state and they, they operate on their own, how, how they do their appraisals. They're a separate entity established by, by the state and they, they operate on their own, how, how they do their appraisals.
The best response to that also would be, that's precisely why we're, we're working on a multi-year budget forecast. Because we, we don't know what we don't know. We're going to run some scenarios so that we can be better prepared based on whatever happens next fiscal year. That chart that, that I'm referring to shows that in prior years, the city hasn't hit 3.5 percent on existing growth. This year, we hit it because of that audit of what happened with the, the appraisal district, which caused that spike. But normally, we've not hit that. So this year was certainly a different year for us. Next year, we don't know, but we have to plan for it because pretty much we can say it wouldn't go above 3.5 percent. So that could be something that we could plan, different scenarios of, different percentages for existing growth and new growth. And part of what I told the commission last meeting was, it really puts the, the, the target on us, so to speak, to make sure that we focus on the new growth. Because that's really what we can rely on to grow at any rate versus existing growth, existing properties.
Even then, this slide is kind of deceptive because all it's showing is if this was next year, it's a total hypothetical for a situation that doesn't even exist. So it's just saying, we grew, you know, six, seven percent this year, I think, right? So this is just a hypothetical showing that if this had occurred next year when these caps were in place, then we wouldn't have had as much of an increase in revenue. That's all it's showing. Because actually this year, we did, we're, if we leave it at the current tax rate, we are going to see a rise in revenue. I just don't see where that has been shown, but, and maybe Klima Shergalowski didn't see that. But there is, we are actually raising more money, obviously, this year, based on those higher appraisals than, than last year. But this is, this is just a hypothetical based on if this occurred next year, so it's kind of, really doesn't matter. I don't even really know what it's there, but okay.
This is a public hearing.
First of all, I want to thank you for the efforts you're doing with the, streamlining our permit process. Because as we increase our tax base, we don't have to have as high a rate. And each time we decide if we're going to allow a, a business to open during the zoning process, it may not look like much, but each one of those increases the tax rate. Incluses, increases the tax base, I'm sorry. And, and each one of those are jobs. And as, has been mentioned here, the taxes are going up 5.9 percent because of the evaluations. I mean, it, it may be keeping the same rate, but the evaluations, again, went up 5.9 percent, and they go up every year. The rate of inflation for 2018 was only 2.44 percent. And in recent months, it's been between 1.4 and 1.9 percent. So we're getting quite a bit more than the rate of inflation, and that has been the case for, ever since I've been coming here. So the question is, where does it end? I spoke to a man that does loans all over the United States, and I asked him, how does, how does our property tax compare with other places? Because that's figured into your mortgage. And he said, well, we compare with California. And I, I said, really? Were that high? And, and he said, yes. And I'm not talking about Texas, I'm talking about Brownsville. And so I, I, I have not done any more research to that, to see how we compare with other cities. But at some point, people can no longer pay what we're asking, and we may at some point need to do more than just go with the same tax rate and maybe back off a little bit because of the, the evaluations going up every year. I, I know there are always things we want. There are always neat things that we would like to add, but I heard last week that the children's museum, when they first opened, got $14 million in grants. And I think that's great. I think that's the way we should fund new things and neat things. But when people don't have a choice as to whether they pay taxes, I think we should be conservative. That's my input, so. I, I would say back off a little of the tax rate, be, go closer to the effective tax rate. Maybe not all the way to that effective tax rate, but somewhere in between. That, that's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? No motion to close?
Is it a motion to close? Motion to close public hearing?
No motion to close, we have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, those opposed?
Next we have items for individual consideration.
Action item number three, consideration action on resolution number 2019 dash zero eighty-two, to appoint members to the animal shelter advisory committee.
Good, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Commissioners. I wanted to begin by saying the, this committee has some vacancies, but they're defined under ordinance. One of the ones is, one of the representatives is for an animal welfare organization. Under, under this spreadsheet, one person meets that criteria, and that would be Ms. Tessie Sarmiento. After that, the other two citizens could be from the list that's given to you. The last two names were applicants, but they did not meet criteria because they live outside the city. That is my recommendation for-
I didn't see Ms., I didn't see Tessie on the original list, I wouldn't remember her name.
So I'll move to-
So I did, I did a check today.
Oh, okay.
And these new names came up. So, so I check up as late as I can through the day.
Sure, sure.
So I'll move to appoint Mrs. Sarmiento. I call her that because she was my teacher.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Tessie Sarmiento, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
All right, those opposed?
I'll move to appoint Brian Martinez of District One.
We have a motion to appoint Brian Martinez?
Second, I'll second.
And a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Now-
We have one more.
One more?
How many, I'm sorry, can you show us the list again?
I was going to say, the ones that were appointed, you have, everybody was, is shown as residing in District Three. Is the Ebony area, is that in your district?
Ebony, yes, three.
I was hoping that maybe we could get somebody from two, but I can't see the names.
So I'll read the names out?
Yeah, just the two?
Jose J. Aparicio, Letitia Castillo, Ivonne Silva Gonzalez.
Okay, so I don't-
I am not familiar with.
I'll nominate Letitia, was it Castillo?
Yes, ma'am.
Castillo, I'll nominate Letitia Castillo.
Mr. Rides, was there confirmation that the previous appointees were in fact residing in District Three?
Yes.
Okay.
Where does the person who just previously appointed, in what district did that, she live?
She lives in three, I think.
Which number?
Mrs. Sarmiento, she lives in three, right?
Yes.
In Rio Viejo?
But, but in this case, it's, because there is a requirement in the ordinance for a-
That doesn't apply.
And in a, an animal welfare organization, and of the applicants, not looking at, at that column, she met that criteria.
It's just somebody that has to have professional experience.
Okay, so then I, I have a motion then to appoint Letitia Castillo, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next we have action item number four, consideration action to authorize the purchase of dating, data modems for patrol units in the amount of $138,897 with five cents as budgeted.
Mayor, City Commissioner, Commander James Pascal. Requesting authority from the city commission to purchase modems for police units. The last four months, we've made a lot of positive changes in the police department. One is getting information to officers, and we, we actually created intel unit, and we're pumping lots of information to officers and getting off, information to officers in the street. What we found was, the current information system to the officer computers is deficient. And we're using air cards, and they're very extremely slow. So we looked at three state vendors, and we, we simply were the lowest vendor. And it, it's very, very nice, good speed, and we're actually able to pump a lot of data, photos, intel stuff that the officer can use on the street for real-time information. The added benefit for this is also we'll be able to add GPS to the units. And we actually will be able to have a screen for the dispatcher and be able to, priority calls for service, dispatcher will look up who's close by. Rather than just trying to see who to send, we'll actually, no priority calls of service, we'd actually send the closest officer to the scene. And also, in next year or so, we should be going to 5G. Once with these modems, we'll actually be able to go seamlessly into the 5G technology. We're asking for authority to make this purchase.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Next we have action item number five, consideration action authorizing the city manager to execute the management agreement contract with First Transit for up to five additional one-year terms in the amount of $1,542,056.72, exercising the secondary renewal option.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, Committee Commission. We have here Representative, Representatives from First Transit, Nick Komponas. He's the Senior Vice President, and Ben Herr, in case you have any questions. And of course, we have Norma Samora, who's our Director of Multimodal Transportation. This is a five-year contract. We have been working with First Transit for approximately 20 years. We exercised our first part of the 10-year contract, and we're now at the second part renewal contract. It would be for a period of five years renewed every year, with an automatic renewal every, every year. Part of the services they carry out for the city is, of course, all our transit planning, real estate management, building utilization, security, fare, schedules, looking at routes. Also initiating grant applications. For example, we rewarded a 5.7 million Tiger Grant. So those are the, some of the services they also provide in towards, in, in a way to maximize our transit funds. And so the total cost over a five-year period is $1,542,056.72. And if you have any questions from First Transit, you can, they're here.
Motion to approve?
Well, discussion, please.
Yeah, we have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, okay?
Discussion.
I, I tried to read through the contract. So Ms. Samora, you're an employee then of this agency and not necessarily the city of Brownsville?
Yes.
Okay, that threw me off. But I remembered then, you're, how does it work then now with the merged MPO? Is it still that the city has to have their own transit function or operations in, independent of the MPO?
Yeah, well, the, the city of Brownsville is the designated recipient of all the transit dollars. First Transit manages that service for the city of Brownsville. And it is a requirement that transit be represented in the RGV MPO.
Okay. Is, is it structured this way for liability? I'm, I was just surprised that this is how it's structured. Is it for liability purposes that it's not, that she's, or this is not like a direct employee of?
I think historically, the city of Brownsville has worked for the city in the last 20 years, and so I think it's been effec- effective and efficient for the city. And I think that's why we've continued it. I think cities are different, sometimes they are city departments and employees, but this is how the city has traditionally done it and it's worked for the city.
I have a couple of questions. One, is it going to come up every year for us to approve, or?
No.
No?
You would approve, oh, this is the proposals to approve the five-year contract. And they're, they're year-term renewals because there's an inflationary rate of 2 percent. And so normally, we would have just said lump sum, five years, this amount. But I think it's the way it reads, it's because of that 2 percent inflation.
Okay, and whose call is it to renew? The city management?
After five years, the commission would have to come, we would have to come back to the commission for a new contract.
I meant on, on the yearly basis, because it's up to five additional one-year terms. So every year, is there a kind of renewal on a yearly basis? That's the way I understand it, or at least the way-
No, I think if you look at, it says, page four, subsection seven, compensation.
I'm just looking at the agenda item itself, the way it reads, for up to five additional one-year terms. That's why I was asking.
Who decides the extension?
Right, is it just something that, that city manager just sends a letter saying, hey, it's renewed? That's all I'm wondering.
I know that there's a rule for contracts that the city enters into.
Exactly, that's what I'm asking then.
Wherein, we cannot have auto-renewal contracts.
Right.
So although it may be a term for a certain amount of years, it comes back from approval every year. That's how we deal with most of the contracts. I would imagine this is similar to this, so, but we would, we'll be happy to review that.
That's why I was asking that question, because I know that we, we can only enter into certain terms.
Correct.
So that's why I was asking.
Well, I guess the, the question also is sometimes, because when you, if it's a line item on the budget and it's identified as this budgetary cost, that's a, a way of approving a contract.
Well, yes, but ultimately, I don't think we can approve self-renewal contracts, so I think that is why it comes up every, every year. But I'll be happy to review that again.
And my only, my only concern is going to be then, if it is required that it come up every year for us to, to approve, then let's just make sure we do that, that's all.
Okay.
Well, we'll review that further with city attorney.
And then going forward, is there any thought about going in-house or putting this apartment in-house once this term contract ends? Is there going to be any move towards that, maybe?
We can explore all options at the city manager's office.
I've not been made aware at this point of any analysis or any, any operational adjustments. But I think that with time, if that's something that the commission would like to look at, like any other service, that's something we can, we can absolutely do.
The question was asked a few years ago, when, I think it was when you did your last strategic long-range plan, as to whether this was the right model for, for going forward. And, and I don't believe that we ever heard an answer other than yes, but there was no, there was no real insight into that.
Right, and it's been, it's been a while, I mean, 20 years. I think the, the, the model has been working, to Helen's point. So it, it addressed an issue that existed 20 years ago, right? Where there was some challenges with management. That's clearly what happened. But like any other service, over time, you want to look and double-check to see if that's still the working model going forward, because things change, right? And I think lessons get learned also, systems get implemented. It's really the commission's decision. I haven't personally seen anything that would cause me in my first few months here to say, let's go in a different direction. I think with more analysis, though, you could arrive at a better conclusion.
Any additional discussion? Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, those opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Next we have action item number six, consideration action to approve a term contract increase for interim planning professional services with Fries and Nichols in the amount of $83,500.
Mayor, Commission, I am here back again. We do have a final date, as I remember in the past presentation, on July 30th, I was asked, you know, not to, not, it's not good to do not exceed, but we do have a final date, October 7th would be the final date where we would use the interim planning director services. We have our organizational, organizational development and HR department has gone out to do a search for a director. We are currently in the midst of interview process this week, and hopefully can already close that process and get someone in right away, because I think that's, that's exactly what we want to do. Meanwhile, we do this, Dawn was providing a diagnostic of our codes. I think being there day-to-day and also being part of Fries and Nichols helps with that diagnostic process and evaluation process, and the kind of the boots-on-the-ground, listening to, to some of the concerns that we have and some of the improvements that we can make. And so I think we would, if this next item is approved, we would, we've asked that she also be included in the team, obviously. So any work that we, she's done with us to be part of that project team and, and include those improvements to our code that she's analyzed these last couple of months. And so this augment for services of $84,000 is for October 7th. We anticipate that our new planning director, planning and redevelopment director would be online then, and we can move forward with all the code rewrite and the building update, building code update that you want to engage upon.
So will Dawn, though, be available for the transition after the person is hired? Because if, we're projecting that in a month, we'll have a new person onboarding, but I guess Dawn needs to stay too.
Right, well, well, right now, we're, we're-
Well, that's what you're suggesting for the next item, right?
Yes, yes.
Item seven?
So in the next item, because it's, it's the same firm, what, what I'm asking, what we've asked the city is, part of the team, she being in, what, part of the team as the associate project manager, so that she would be coming, maybe, it wouldn't be every day, but she would be here facilitating that transition and fills, and part of the code rewrite process, so.
How much has been paid so far into that?
So the initial, the initial $34,000 that was paid was more of, there was a couple of services. We hired them to do, for example, the West Trail and to see how Morrison Road would be redeveloped. It was some of the money, $34,000 was used for that. It was used to do some of the initial code diagnostic, but it wasn't, it wasn't really used as an interim director. When we, when I- When we, when I came to you July thirtieth, that was really when I said, we really need someone pretty much thirty-five hours a week at fifty thousand dollars for these, these two-month process, and this would be like the last of the process, it would be October seventh, it would be part of the code rewrite process, or diagnostic would be included, so we would actually be getting the kind of a two-for-one code diagnostic evaluation and also having someone, a director interim, to help our staff.
It kinda looks like you're gonna pay eighty-three thousand for a month of services, I could be wrong, or I'm seeing this wrong. Plus, the next item, you're asking four-hundred-and-fifty thousand, so where's the overlap? I mean, what's the four-hundred-and-fifty gonna, it's the same firm.
So, I, sorry, go ahead. So, one of the, one of the things that Dawn is doing is, there's a diagnostic, initial diagnostic of how bad our codes are, she is, rather than, it's not double doing it twice, because Fries and Nichols would not be doing that diagnostic, that's being done with Dawn's services, since she's on the ground right now, you know, in the department. So, that's actually reduced some of our costs for the whole code rewrite, 'cause it's not only, it's our building code, our energy code, our fire code, our Unified Development Code, our first form-based code, so it would've, instead of, the, that scope...
But that's the next item, isn't it? Four-hundred-and-fifty for all of that, but you're including it in this item as some kind of overlay or overlap, or some kind of additional service that we're gonna get when the next item asks for four-hundred-and-fifty to do what you're telling us, the unification of the codes. And let me ask this, was, at the agenda review meeting, was this on there? The four-hundred-and-fifty? I don't remember it being there.
Yes, sir, it was on.
I remember the eighty-three.
Yes, sir, it was on there, what I would say is that the scope of the code diagnostic is not in the second contract, so we took that out and we included it into this contract, so she's already doing the diagnostic every single day, it's almost like taking a whole, how can we improve our codes, at the same time, you're providing customer service. So, you kinda have to do it anyway, and so, rather than doing it twice, we're always, we already have a head start on that, and so, it's kinda getting the head start, draining her brain, and then also including all the code diagnostic part early on.
What was the, the next item, I know we're not on it yet, but was that bid out? The unification process?
Actually, no, we did not go through the whole competitive bid process, we did identify, I mean, I like to give a presentation, but it was, it did not go through a whole competitive bid process.
If I may make a comment, so, many years ago, when I was first elected, I started asking about ordinances, sidewalk, and so on and so forth, things that I'm passionate about, and I was told very clearly at the time that our whole code system was very outdated, very kind of written-upon, written-upon, written, tangled, if you will, and I said, well, why can't we just fix it? And I was told, the process of unraveling and untangling all those years of code, written-upon code, was incredibly complicated and would need to be outsourced to transfer over to the more modern Unified Development Code. I then asked, how much would that cost? And the answer was eight-hundred thousand to nine-hundred thousand dollars. This was about eight years ago, when I asked this question, and we did actually, I did actually begin to recruit and try to raise the money from some of our biggest entities, and we didn't get very far. So, it's, it's very nice to see it finally happening, it, it looks or sounds a lot cheaper than what was estimated to me eight years ago, but that's the comment that I have to make.
Doesn't it make sense, if we're gonna get a new director for that department, that they have some kind of input into this? I mean, you're, you're, you're having them, you, they're not even gonna have a chance to talk about how to do what they're...
Let me explain it this way, if, and I had heart room with the figure, because if you look at it from a salary standpoint, it looks deceiving. There's, there are services here that are professional services that are not to be broken down by hour, so to speak, what we did is, we ended up for continuity's sake. What had to happen is, we're setting things up, we're teeing things up for the incoming director to be able to have a seamless transition between what was and the next contract.
Shouldn't that director have some say in who they're gonna hire to unify the codes?
Well, the next director's gonna actually have a better situation, 'cause they're not gonna have to deal with what's gonna be done, and they're gonna be asked to oversee the entire next item. They're gonna shepherd the entire twelve-month process, that's not gonna be, Fries and Nichols is a consultant team, right now, they're doubling as a staff person and a consultant, because we needed to make, we had to make sure that whoever was working closely with them was actually giving them the type of staff service that we needed, to really take advantage of their, of their expertise, and that's where we ended up creating this stop-gap measure and this bridge strategy, per se, that we said, okay, how do we bring in somebody that they have that will be part of the project team, but who can provide us prof- professional services to make sure that we don't neglect them while we have him, not even on contract, we couldn't even build a scope of work for what the next item is. They've actually helped do that in this three-to-four-month timeframe while providing service, and they'll cover that in the next bullet. You'll see some of the short-term wins, some things that we're gonna be able to adopt now because of work that they've done, like the energy code, sidewalk ordinance, they're, they're fronting certain items that we're not gonna do as part of the twelve-month process, because they've already done some of that for us. So, this was a creative way, so to speak, not that it's, doesn't come with a cost, but this was the creative way to make sure that we get the work that has to get done, done in the most effective way.
And Commissioner Galaski, to your point, there is a transition, it, you know, it's not, there won't be side-by-side, but there will be a transition between, because she will be part of the team if, if the contract is awarded, so you'll have a new director on, hopefully, in October seventh, and all that support system to get the code rewritten.
And my bigger concern, I share Commissioner Neese's concern, is, it looks like we're paying Dawn, and I'm sure she's worth it, this amount of money, but it, who knows what the director of Planning Services is going to be, so, it seems like she's getting paid a month what that person might be paying three-fourths of a year. And on top of that, then, and the next thing, we're voting for almost a half-a-million dollars just to rewrite the codes, but then, who's gonna train the employees to actually, that's gonna be an additional expense, and in the meantime, things should be improving, but we as city commissioners keep getting complaints from business owners that all these petty things, obstacles are being presented to them. So, I think our, our big concern is, we're voting on things to pay big bucks, and we're not seeing any change right now. Instead, we're being told that it might be a year and a half until this gets sorted out.
Well, we've compressed the schedule for twelve months, I mean, to Commissioner Galen's point is, it, I don't think the code has really been rewritten since two thousand, so we're talking about nineteen years of compressed code entitlement and entanglements with overlay, slash overlay and overlay, coupled with a very outdated process, nothing's digitized, I think we still ask for plans on Mylar, so she has identified wins, and in the presentation, you'll see changes that have been included, but until we change the, the meat and potatoes of our codes, and in addition to the building codes and fire codes, so what can, what, what you don't want to happen is you change one code here, but then the other code conflicts, so you're almost looking at...
The best thing is just to repeal all the codes, get the current, modern codes, and implement them. You don't have to go back and, and see how they're all entangled, you can just simply get the new codes, repeal the old ones, and make sure they're congruent, 'cause by now, people have, I'm sure, been able to figure out how to have these codes working together.
And I would say, Commissioner Neese...
I don't see how that can take a year or a year and a half, and...
Yeah, twelve months is actually very compressed.
Yes, that's what was explained to me...
Because we're actually gonna ask a lot of, this is more, this is not a simple fix, and, and the other thing I wanna say about how we ended up doing this strategy is that, I'll tell you that, it makes it easier to recruit when you tell somebody who, what we're doing and how we're fixing things, so they can come in and start to help shepherd the overall process, but here are the things that we've done and what we're doing, we're not gonna put you in a role to come and be Superman, so...
You're not letting them have the say in what, they're gonna be judged by their performance, and they're going in already confined by what you're trying to do tonight.
But we're not tweaking, we're not creating the environment for them, because that's gonna be created through the process. What we're, what we're doing is setting them up for success by having them be the staff professional, working with the commission staff, the consultant team to help.
What if that person has a different approach, some different approach, that they prefer? And, 'cause they're gonna be judged on their, their performance.
Well, yeah, and with the approaches...
I mean, this is not the only approach, I would think.
Well, I mean, it's a very detailed and very good approach, I've done code rewrites in the past where I've completely undone a code, especially what you've said, Commissioner Neese, I would say in terms of, the, the problem with adopting something off the shelf is that you really have to tailor it for your city, so while I think the building and fire codes are gonna go faster, because they're really just amendments and they're already working on, I think those could be adopted a lot quicker than the whole, drafting a whole Unified Development Code. So, I think in terms of building and fire and those things, we're already talking to the National Historic Preservation Areas in San Antonio and in Tulsa, that, that part of the process, I think will go faster than the whole rewriting your whole code, because it is intertwined, it hasn't been really updated since two thousand, two thousand eight, there was a couple of amendments, but I mean, that's dire, usually, you update your codes maybe, you know, every, you know, five to seven years, at least, but there's a lot of deferred maintenance that we've had on our code that's just magnified, and so, and, and so I think having you on the subcommittees, getting your input, we always all have a list of all our stakeholders, including them in the process, 'cause I think that they also wanna be included every couple of months, and we started for the love of Brownsville, but including them in the process and getting their feedback, they also wouldn't want us to just go approve something that they haven't seen and participate in the process, so I think it's, to your point, Commissioner, it does take twelve months, but part of that is also that check-in with you all as subcommittees, and also the check-in with our stakeholders, our developers, to see if we're going all in the right direction.
So, that would be just to, to uni- oh, sorry, and standardize the codes, or, or, you know, but then, how about training employees in the different departments? How much longer is that gonna, until it's actually in effect?
Well, I see that, we, we believe in participatory leadership here, and, and participatory leadership is maybe your staff is brought in doing the whole process, it's not like, a lot of cities say, hey, I just adopted this, now implement it. That's what happened, that's the problem with our comprehensive plan, why wasn't it implemented? 'Cause they didn't know how to implement, but this is kinda be a side-by-side, they are going to be part of the process, they are gonna actually write some of those amendments that speak to historic preservation, but with our, with experts looking at them and looking at best practices, so it's, it's, it's gonna be that they're gonna be brought along, the whole department is not only the director as a bottom-up approach, but also the staff, that's what makes for a good code. The, the interpretation of the code is very important on a daily日 basis, and so, they are going to be part of the whole rewrite in our engineering department, because it's not just, it's also about trails and roads and sections, we don't have, we, we use text sections of, of road sections, which is not really applicable for cities. We should have our own typical sections for arterial roads, collector roads, for residential and commercial, and we don't even have that, but if my, if my engineering code is different from my development code, then they'll can conflict, and so, we're looking at all the codes, the advantage of this is that you're looking at multiple codes at the same time, so they do not conflict, because the alternative to that is having conflicting codes, and like, now how do I, I, I implement it this way in planning department, it goes to engineering department and says, oh, well, I don't have that type of street width, and, and then I go to fire, and that's too wide or that's too narrow, so it's getting fire, building, planning, and engineering with the director all together, at the same time, with your subcommittees and your, and your stakeholders, that's what makes for a good process, because you know what? They're, they're gonna feel like they were involved in the process.
This is long overdue, it's wonderful to hear, and I do, I do notice, because I do pay attention to planning, that, that you've begun even now, changing the attitude in planning in terms of approach to problem, problem-solving and, and optimism and so on and so forth, so I think it's long overdue, wonderful.
I would agree with that, because I, I know that I personally have heard from several developers and builders that, that are pleased with, with the changes that have occurred and, and have actually commented, I know Commissioner Cowan and I were, were on the text ring with, with one individual who complimented the process and, and somebody that does a lot of work with the city, so I'm, I'm happy to see a lot of the positive changes, and I think we've seen the economic impact of having a convoluted set of codes for so long, and it really hadn't, it had been put on the back burner without realizing what it really means. I, I think that department and, and building and, and planning and permitting, all that really, it has a huge impact on the city and, and the revenues that are, that are being raised by the city, and if you're not letting people open businesses, you're not letting people build, we're not seeing that economic impact, so I realize that it's a large amount of money, but I also think that it's too big a job for one planning director, one person to handle, and then you have an expertise of several professionals within one firm that, that lend their expertise from different cities across the US and, and, you know, different types of professions, so I, I, I agree, it's a lot of money, but I also see that it's been something that, that's been deferred for almost twenty years, so, and this is a huge priority for me, I heard it all over the place, so it needs to get done.
I would agree with the Mayor and Commissioner Galen on that, and to say that it does sound like a lot of money, but it's something that needs to be done, and we've probably lost that kind of money more than tenfold, probably fifty-fold, because of the condition that our codes are in, and people refuse to work with us, so I am so grateful, and I will reiterate that I have also heard the compliments of how our planning department has changed in the last six months to, you know, whatever. I just am very, very grateful that it's happening now, and I'm very regretful that it did not happen eight years ago, when this was brought up.
And just to clarify, this isn't something, if there's actually something that can be implemented quickly, that's gonna be implemented quickly, it's not like we're gonna wait and do it in twelve months altogether, right?
Right, right, we'll be, and I, and I, and I think the building and fire code and all those amendments, we're gonna go a lot quicker, faster than the whole UDC rewrite. We have a lot of work to do, that is absolutely right. If anybody says that their planning department's perfect and's got it all done, that's not, that's not being forthright, I think we definitely have to improve, I think when, when I, one of the first times I took this job, and I, I remember I was at Starbucks, and I was opening the code, our codes for the first time, and, you know, in the first ten, fifteen minutes, you notice that there's major problems. The first ten, fifteen minutes of reading our code, 'cause of so many overlays, so, and the Unified Development Code is to make it easy streamlined, take some of those overlays out, and so, instead of going through this maze, you know, my kids always go through these levers, what's that streamlined, what's that faster system, and are we all, because it's like this convoluted, interpreted differently? So, staff interpretation may be different if you go from one person to the next, so...
I don't want there to be a public perception that I'm against unifying the codes.
Yes.
All right? I think I've been on the forefront of this movement ever since I got in here.
Especially downtown?
Yes, and especially everywhere, because I'm getting all the complaints, just like you have now, and I don't want it to be perceived that I'm against that, but I don't agree with this approach, that's all it is.
And my only question is, why don't we just adopt another one, another cities that already has it sorted out, and then just tailor it to us?
There are, San Antonio would be a good example for that.
I, I would say we're taking the best practices, I think, I'll, I'll give you an example why it's not good practice to do that. Many cities, when they were first initiating the form-based code or the smart code, it was a kind of an off-the-shelf type code, and everybody wanted to be really innovative, so the City of Hoda, where I work for, the former director adopted that code, and it was off-the-shelf. What ended up having to do is, because it was tailored for the city, it almost created no growth, or very limited growth, and so, it had the opposite effect, until I brought a consultant to help me really tailor it for the city, it's, it's a way, this is a way to tailor it for our stakeholders in our community, not, it's very different where a population, even San Antonio, San Antonio's goals are maybe different in the downtown than our go- goals, and so, maybe our amendments would be different from what amendments they would, they would approve, and so, and maybe our fire lanes and speaking with our fire chief should be different from the fire lane widths that they would accept in their fire, because they have certain ladder trucks that are so wide or so, or narrow, so I think, I think we all can get the best of both, is that we can tailor it for what our stakeholders and our residents, and really say, you know, I have addressed your comment, and this is how we've addressed it, through this building code and fire code, but best practices of other cities, absolutely, we can take those, and we are speaking with those building officials and fire marshals, but really, the best part of this is that it's tailored for your city, for our city, and for our business owners.
Okay, do we have any motions?
Motion to approve.
And a motion to approve, and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Those opposed? Okay, Commissioner Neese is opposed? Commissioner Galaski?
No, I'll be aye, I'll be aye, I want, I just want it to move more quickly.
Next, we have action item number seven, consideration action to approve the Master Professional Services Agreement and Professional Services Agreement for Unified Development Code and Building Code Update Facilitation in the amount of four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Mayor, Commissioner, we do have a presentation by Chance Sparks, he would be the project manager for Fries and Nichols, we do have representatives from Fries and Nichols here, and we also will be included, some of the... the wins or identifications of improvements that we can make on a short-term basis, you know, and as we go through this process. So I want to turn it to them, so you can see some of their experience with codes.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. Pleased to be here this evening here in Brownsville. I'm Chance Sparks with Friesen Nichols, and we're here to talk a little bit about a Unified Development Code and some of the work that we've been doing over here over about the last three or four months. We're very excited to be down here. Personally, I grew up in South Texas, I get very excited about doing work in the Rio Grande Valley, and particularly in being here this evening. For those of you that aren't familiar with Friesen Nichols, we've been around for about 125 years, and we're a unique firm in that we view our role as trusted advisor. What that means from a planning perspective is that our urban planning and design group only works with public sector and institutional clients. This helps us avoid conflict of interest issues and things like that. We're also multidisciplinary. We cover every aspect of engineering, from the tiniest pipe in the ground to largest large-scale airports, to high-speed rail facilities and everything in between. We're over 800 employees and we have over a dozen offices in the state of Texas. So we really just view our role as being city builders to some extent, helping cities achieve their ambitions and what they kind of hope and dream of being going forward. I'd like to introduce our team that we put together for this project. Of course, very hard for me, Chance Sparks is the project manager. We also have Wendy Chabaye, who's our principal in charge. She's over at the entire urban planning and design group. She does also directly engage on projects. She is not just purely a manager, she's actually a practical applied planner. We also have Dan Seffco, he's our senior advisor. He is the lead technical professional for urban planning at the, at Friesen Nichols, brings over 45 years of experience, particularly in code development. He is somewhat known for having written more development codes in the state of Texas than anybody else. Another member of our team that's here today is Jane Ariana, she is with Livable Plans and Code. She'll be helping with form-based elements and downtown elements. Of course, you are familiar with Dawn, I believe she's made a few appearances before y'all. We're very excited to have her on this project, because it makes the whole development process, development code writing process very unique. Usually we're analyzing a code from the outside. In this case, we'll actually be looking at the code from having actually experienced the implementation of it and understanding what are those little things, those, those pain points within your ordinances. That diagnostic is also important, because it helps us to identify opportunities along the way in writing the codes for where we can slip in an amendment, where we see something that says, hey, this thing that we're working on for the new code, there's actually a spot in the current ordinance where we can drop that in right now and get some, get some early wins moving. That's part of why that diagnostic is so important. Eliana Tuli will be part of our team working on development codes. She is our, one of our bilingual planners, and also brings the experience of having been a private sector planner for development projects in addition to working for cities. And finally Erica Craycraft, who is one of our most detail-oriented planners that you'll find in our, in our group. But we also have this incredibly deep bench of talent. There is not an issue that can come up in a development code that we don't have somebody with expertise that we can tap and, and help identify and solve that issue. So part of why we're so excited about this is we've seen this, this fresh face of leadership here in Brownsville, and we see, we're seeing the momentum and the energy that's coming with that. And what's so great here is we see this energy coming from you as a commission, as staff, but we've also seen it coming from the private sector, your, your businesses that are trying to open, the downtown efforts that we're seeing emerge. And we're, we're excited about that, and we want to take that through to implementation where, instead of the red tape that you're trying to solve is bureaucracy, we'd like that problem to be that you can't make it to all the ribbon cuttings. That's our fundamental goal here. So part of this has actually started several months back, and so what I'm going to walk you through briefly is some of the efforts that we've been involved with. This has all been involved in a collaborative effort with the city staff along the way to, to help find ways to make some incremental changes that can get you some quick momentum. In particular, and this is partly what excited us so much, is this idea of cultural alignment and focus on customer service. We've been particularly involved in some of this customer service training from Dawn's experience as well as mine, as well as some of the efforts with stakeholder outreach. My first interaction with Brownsville was actually at the For the Love of Brownsville event in April. I came down just to see what was going on and, and saw, okay, something's, something's cooking here, it's going to be a cool place here in a minute. We also did some stakeholder meetings in June to help begin to diagnose some of the issues that we've seen. And we're also going through some organizational assessments, some of those, some of the fruits of that labor that have already been implemented along the way. We looked at historic building renovations, looking at those adjustments to how you apply a building code to function in a building that's been around for 100-plus years. The way we built things 100 years ago and today are not the same. It's not saying that one is wrong or one is right, but they need to be able to talk to one another, and we've helped with that conversation. This has also involved helping to educate the community through some of these conventions and conferences that have been occurring. Within building codes, we've been looking at the energy code updates, that was actually a state mandate that came down as a, as essentially a local preemption, unfunded mandate and helping you through that process, as well as looking at what happens when you transition from the 2012 to the 2015 codes overall. What's really interesting about that transition is there's actually a lot of improvements that happened. 2012 was kind of a rough, rough jump from 2009 for a lot of people, and 2015 sought to resolve that. So we bring that type of experience as well. We even look at some of the operational things, like multifamily licensing and how to address violations, we've been assisting with that. And then where we are really getting excited is some of these zoning issues that we've seen emerge and, and helping to address things like the overlay, where you have these little, little subtle things that are done from one overlay to another, that have big, have had big impacts and have helped or have caused some curtailment and development potential. And we're, we're looking at how to resolve that. Even things that seem as, as small as a carport amendment, we've been involved with, to help find those, find those pain points and, and essentially give them an aspirin. Looking at sidewalks to assist with issues, we heard, you know, complete streets mentioned tonight. And complete streets are great in, in retrofits, but you also want to look at your codes to make, to help, help you get to the point where you're not having to retrofit that anymore, where what's getting built on the ground is actually meeting that expectation. We're looking at those, the little issues in subdivision with lot mergers and things of that nature that have been frustrating for individual property owners. And then just some general on-call planning services. You heard mention of the Morrison Road and the West Trail alignment ish items, providing the interim planning director services, which we hope you have enjoyed having Dawn here. I know she has actually really enjoyed her time in Brownsville, and, and likewise, so have I. And also working on this, this diagnostic element, which is helping us to find opportunities for quick wins along the way again, and also understanding what, really honestly, what all will need to be repealed. The, the web is complicated, but we want to, and we want to move forward with something fresh and new. So our approach, there's a pre-work element to this, and part of why the diagnostics on the on-call part of this is so we can get working on that now and, and get that going. There's also an element of downtown planning that comes with this, it's a, it's a separate item. But really, the, the meat and potatoes of this starts with identifying solutions, looking at what were all those issues, what were the stakeholders saying, what are you hearing on that daily basis from text messages to phone calls to emails? And figure out what, what are the solutions that are going to work in Brownsville? What works in a city like San Antonio may not translate well here. You know, we look at San Antonio, they've got an army of about, I think around 50 to 60 planners. Here you're working with this much smaller groups, you have to be able to adapt and design your regulations to fit your administrative capacity. We, then we go into a code preparation phase. This is building the codes incrementally, a piece at a time, and, and finding what works, what doesn't, all those nuances. And we look at zoning, your subdivision standards, supplemental standards, those are your things like signage, trees, flood, flood protection often appears in that, in those types of sections. And then there's an adoption, and really what's going to be so important here is celebrating that adoption. One of the things that we heard at those stakeholder meetings in June was this, was this deep undercurrent of frustration and, and an undercurrent of, of not believing that it would change. And we want to change that narrative and, and put essentially everybody on notice that, hey, Brownsville is here and we're here to play ball, and we want to be part of that, that story with you. So when we look at what, what makes for a successful code, in, in your case, it's really five big things. We, we always say, curate the menu. This is the idea that when you go to a restaurant, you don't eat everything on the menu in one sitting, but you want to see what all is available and, and make sure that what you have fits the needs of who's, who's going to be eating there. It's kind of your basics of that. Same thing applies to zoning. You want to make sure you have every tool available out there at your disposal that will meet the needs of your customers as they come in and they choose Brownsville for their future. We want to efficiently engage the stakeholders. We want to find out ways to get good, meaningful feedback from them, not just, we're really frustrated, but instead, we're frustrated and hear the specific things that are frustrating us. We want to address all the existing deficiencies and we want to create very straightforward approval processes. One of the great overwhelming things that we have heard is, is that process has been, has been driving a lot of the, a lot of the frustration and the issues. We can, we can certainly help with that story. So when we start putting this together, we looked at, at a number of approaches and schedules, trying to best meet the needs of Brownsville. And we, we asked, asked Helen along the way, you know, what's, what's the need, what's the pressure here, what are, what are you looking for? And so we prepared three different schedules, a 12, a 14, and a 16-month schedule. They all largely accomplish the same thing, they just do it in slightly different ways. The big difference being is that on a 12-month schedule, you have the same amount of work, but it's compressed and it's very intense. We're able to, to, to bring resources in to, to address that kind of more, that kind of faster schedule, but it also puts a lot of pressure on the leadership of the city and on the community and stakeholders as well. It's, it's a lot, it's heavy. But it's very doable, we know we can do it, we've done it in the past. Again, the 14-month, you see this where it gets a little bit, a little bit slightly more spread out. The big differences that you see is that when you're on that more compressed schedule, there's multiple sections of the ordinance that are being worked on and revised and drafted at the same time. So it requires a very careful touch to make sure that you're, you're crossing over and making sure all these ordinances or codes are talking to each other. A 16-month is, is what we sometimes see for, for a little bit larger city like this. Based on us getting this head start on diagnostic with Dawn having been here, we do believe that that 12-month schedule is workable, it's doable, and based on kind of the energy and passion we've seen over the last few months, we think that that is also the case on the city's side as well. So when we look at what does a path forward look like here, the key things are going to be having stakeholders that are problem-solving oriented. Based on our experience, we think you have those. We are not worried about that. It's scheduling efficiency. This is going to be creating a schedule and sticking to it, being ready to review those drafts when they're put together, being able to respond, give quick commentary and, and thoughts back to us so that we can best articulate a code that fits your needs. You're going to have to have everybody focused and engaged. What I just saw on the, on the, on the prior items is that I don't think y'all have that issue. You look pretty focused and engaged to me. And really what's going to be important is optimism and momentum. This is going to be about believing that Brownsville can, can, can do something more. We, we heard some of the comments in stakeholder meetings of, yeah, we, you know, Brownsville's talked about this before, nothing changed. Well, let's change the narrative. And so that's where, that's where we get particularly excited. But really what, what gets us really interested in Brownsville is what we're seeing happen here in terms of the culture. What we have observed and the focus on customer service, on trying to do things the right way, is we find that that really aligns with our culture at Friesen Nichols. It's why we love what we do. You know, when, when we look at what y'all, what y'all are trying to do here, trying to create this ethical environment that responds to citizens, that, that delivers the quality and is very servant-oriented, and that's our same approach. And that's why we're excited to be here. And I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I think we all hashed this out on the last item.
I have a quick question. I know there, there was some recent legislation that was passed that requires cities to approve or deny a set of plans when presented within a certain amount of time. I don't know if this program addresses that in an appropriate way.
Yes, this would. In fact, I'm the, I'm the president-elect of American Planning Association for Texas Chapter, and that bill was actually one of the bills that I've almost unfortunately become the expert on. But that's, what you're referring to is what we call the shot clock bill. And, and when we write codes like this, we write them to meet the state law requirements that are in place. We think that we won't have an issue doing that here with 3167. We may even recommend some interim alterations in order to align.
Do you have attorneys on staff? Are there any attorneys involved in your team?
We do not have attorneys on staff. Typically, what we have always done with our codes is, if there's a need for legal assistance, we'll usually pull in a subconsultant for that. Main reason being is that we want to make sure that, that any attorneys that are involved with this are philosophically aligned with your city attorney, is the case maybe, because we want to make sure there's a good, comfortable relationship there. We also work very closely with city attorneys when we don't have legal services involved. But we also liken this to, to when you prepare taxes, is the example we often use, that you don't have to be an attorney to prepare your, to prepare taxes, but you better know the laws. And that is how Friesen Nichols approaches these projects, that's why we've done so many of them, is we understand what the laws are and how they apply.
Want to make the motion?
Commissioner, before you, you all move, Legal's going to request that whatever you all decide, if it's in the positive fashion, that it be subject to legal approval of the final contractual agreement, because there's some gaps we're still cleaning out.
I would hope that's the case every time we approve a contract.
When they, when they're speaking clean, we normally don't intercede, but in this instance, we're still working out some language.
Okay.
Right, and I guess because the contract does speak to up to 16 months, if we, if you all wanted to find that, that would be 12 months, then we would change that, modify that in the contract.
Motion to approve, subject to those stipulations.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
May.
One, one opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have action item number eight, consideration and action to establish a city charter review committee.
In speaking with city staff and with Mr. DeCoste, it appears that I think the last time we, as a commission, reviewed the city charter was back in 2014, when, when a committee was convened and they did their review and provided some recommendations, but my understanding was that nothing was done at the time for X reason, right? So I think it's put in upon our, our commission to, to go out and restart that process, hopefully not reinvent the wheel, but, um, so we can, you know, modernize our city charter and make any improvements that we deem necessary.
Is this a committee that exists already, Mr. DeCoste?
It, it used to exist. It would need to be created again.
No, the, the committee from before was appointed by the commission. Each person.
I was on that committee in 2015.
So then we just, we would just then form the committee, is that in your recommendation script? Okay. So then we form it and appoint members today?
No, we would need to notice that up, and then we could do it in the very next commission meeting.
Oh, okay. So it would be subject to people applying then for the committee?
Correct.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do I have a second? A second? Any further discussion? Could the commission just appoint? If they have somebody?
Yes, it's created afresh, so the commission could decide that the commission that they're creating is subject to commission approval.
Okay, okay. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And I would welcome members of the public to apply on our website, because this is a very important committee and it affects every single person that lives within the city of Brownsville.
Okay. That's all of the agenda items that I would then...
We would need to make a motion to move into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session?
May I read the item, please?
Oh, sure.
Executive Session A Attorney Consultation Pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to Receive Legal Advice and Counsel in Connection with the City's Rights, Duties, Privileges, and Obligations Related to the Collective Bargaining Labor Agreement Between the City and Duly Recognized Bargaining Agent for the City's Law Enforcement Personnel, the Brownsville Police Officers Association.
We'll leave it there. There was a motion.
Motion to go into executive session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Stand adjourned. Please ask to executive session, sorry. I need a bigger gap.
Next agenda item is possible action on any items discussed in executive session. Letter A, consideration and possible action, if any, in response to the last collective bargaining proposal by the Brownsville Police Officers Association with respect to healthcare, base salary, contract term, and related items.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Elizabeth Walker in the Office of the City Manager, and I'm joined this evening by Rebecca Hayward with the firm of Denton-Nevado, who's Special Counsel and Lead Negotiator on behalf of the city. And additionally, I have as a resource our Finance Director. We've invited to join us this evening members of the Brownsville Police Officers Association, and I believe a representative of their negotiating team is also present, and he would like to speak to you after it is that we've made this presentation. This presentation is a summary of where we are now, subsequent to the mediation that we had over two days last week. We have engaged interest-based negotiations as a means to arrive at... Click. What it is that we've called over the good faith negotiation period is that their interests are new incentives and certifications, the bill of rights, and wage and health benefits. In particular, what's very important to them is preserving retiree benefits. The city has asserted that its interest is to move toward a unified health plan because that would enable us to provide more equitable health benefits for both our civil and non-civil service employees and their dependents, and it would also equip the city to be better positioned to adapt to trends in the national healthcare marketplace. Their proposal at the outcome of the mediation was to propose a three-year contract term with the first year a 4% increase to base wages, years two and three, 2% each respectively. Additionally, they offered to increase their deductible from $200 annually to $250 annually, and also increase to a $1,000 annual out-of-pocket expense. You can see here the total cost over the three-year term of that proposal is 9.86 million in wages and incentives and 2.25 medical over the three-year term, primarily borne in the first year.
If I may ask really quickly, how is it that the previous slide? Okay, for the cost increase over the current year, 2020, it's a 4%, but it's 2.4%. And then 2022, it's 2%, so half of that, but yet it's a lot more. How does that happen?
So between 2020 and 2021, you're going to have some officer, well, you have seniority pay and longevity pay. So you'll have officers that are just going to rise in those pages from time in.
Step-in grade increases.
Yes, so in 2021, 20 to 2021, you're going to have a significant amount of officers just getting that increase for being in. So even if you had a zero for the first year and zero in the second year, you're going to see about a $700,000 increase in just step grade.
I have a question. Let's say we have an officer that gets hurt while on duty. Does that come out of their insurance and personal pay, or does the city cover that?
That would likely be a workers' compensation issue.
Okay. Even if they have like a longstanding injury for the next five, 10 years from it? Like, let's say they get hurt or break their back or something, and they would get workers' comp for how long?
It would just depend on until when they reached MMI, but as being a civil service city, we also offer them a lot of basically benefits for that injury on duty. So you'll have workers' comp, 143, and then anything additional the city would most likely cover.
So like if somebody were to get shot, or the city would cover it?
Yes, and even if they had to leave the service for whatever reason, for instance, for being shot or a medical injury, the exceptions for caps on sick vacation time would not apply to them. So there are different ways to protect.
It's not really vacation time if something like that happens.
Well, I mean, there are certain caps that the city would have that wouldn't apply for officers if they were injured in the line of duty and needed a medical retirement. So there's different ways that the officers are protected.
And let's say that an officer gets injured, maybe like chasing somebody or running and falls down and, you know, busts their knee open or something, and it's not really treated, it would always be treated as a work injury, or that would have to go through their personal insurance?
If it's in the line of duty, it would be covered under workers' comp.
This was their most recent proposal at the outcome of the mediation. This was the city's proposal to them at the outcome of this mediation. We sought to honor their three-year agreement period to a three-year term, but you'll see here that the city proposed wage escalation over the three-year period to coincide with a transition from the present medical plan to a unified health plan. And how does the city identify that? As a 0% increase in wages in year one, but because of that step-in grade that quantifies its $759,000 increase in compensation to police officers in year one, even without any adjustment to their base wages. Year two, in year 2021, a 2% increase, and year three, a 4% increase. These would align with a transition from their current medical health plan to what it is, what we dub Plan C, which is what it is all other non-civil service employees of the city of Brownsville, as well as the fire department are presently on. So for year one, we would honor what it is that they had optioned to us, which is to increase from $200 to a $250 annual deductible. Year two, they would transition under the city's proposal to what it is that all other city employees were under as of last week. And year three, they would then ride with whatever it is that the city then has an effect for all of their employees. What I'd like to note on this slide is that the association had asserted as part of this interest-based negotiation that what was of significant importance to them, it was a preeminent interest, was preserving their retiree benefits. And the city proposal seeks to honor that interest. Under this proposal, the city said it would effectively grandfather the retirees at the health plan that they had at time of retirement, and would carry that until such time that they had other health benefits, either because of another employer or Medicare at age 65. You can see here then what would be the corresponding cost to the city over the three-year This is part of the reason why it is that the city asserted the importance of a unified health plan. Again, remember the two reasons being equity and adoptability. This slide speaks to the equity. Presently, the police plan costs $15,000 per year per employee, and for all other employees, it's $9,500.
I can't see the slide. The police is, is it 288?
Yes, 288.
288?
Yes, 288 employees.
And so there is 937?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
And this is, but slide speaks to the adoptability issue. What we have here is four scenarios, four scenarios that almost follow the chronology of what would be proposed under the city's plan. Scenario one is where it is that the plans would stay as they were as of last week. We've already moved this week to what is now scenario two. No changes for the police plan, but for all other employees, including non-civil service and fire, the adjustments have already been made, and open enrollment is presently being held with a $1,000 annual deductible. So we're presently at scenario two. Scenario three is if we stay at that $1,000, $3,000 change, and the police incrementally increases to the plan that we had as of last week. So this is what it is we would propose for them as of year two. And then year three would be scenario four, where we're both on the same plan. And you can see there's a corresponding decrease in the deficit to manage that health plan over the three-year term. This slide is meant to illustrate how it is that $2.1 million, what's baked into the budget right now, is the step-in grade and what it is that the city has offered as part of the proposal. The red line is the cost of their proposal to the city. We bring this up as a basis of comparison. You can see the left-hand most column, that's the plan elements for City of Brownsville police participants. The next column is the City of Brownsville, all other participants, the Plan C participants, which is non-civil service and fire. Here's just a smattering of our market sample, Brownsville PUB, BISD, Harlingen, and McAllen. I think what's particularly noteworthy is the bottom-most row, which is essentially the city's share, what it is the city pays for that particular employee in the health plan. So you can see with the City of Brownsville, $654 that's monthly, whereas it's $413 for all other employees. That's fairly consistent with the market with PUB 460 or BISD 410, but sliding all the way over to McAllen, McAllen subsidizes at a rate of $280. And I have this listing here again, just as a smattering of market sample, to illustrate that many other cities do not actually include the health plan as part of their union contract. This is exceptional. Brownsville is one, and so is the City of Corpus Christi. With your permission, I'm happy to defer to my colleagues or to any representative of the Brownsville Police Officers Association.
Okay. I'd like to hear from the BPOA.
Good evening, Mr. Avendaño. Just introduce yourself, please.
Yes. Hi. My name is Mario Avendaño, and I am with the Brownsville Police Officers Association. Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for the time to allow us to speak. After following that presentation, I just wanted to bring up a couple of points that the police officers wanted me to bring up to the commission, okay? What we're asking for right now is for you all to consider the proposal that we have brought back to the city, okay? We feel that the proposal is fair based on the previous contracts that we have had before the city. Yes, there is a discrepancy in the plans, there is a difference between them, but we understand that healthcare costs are going up, okay? We do also understand that we need to look for alternatives, all right? We want to work with the city. We've offered to work with the city, so we can sit during their planning, I'm looking at all sorts of different health plans that could be offered to not only the police officers, but as well as the other city employees. As a police officer in Brownsville, we're lucky. We have collective bargaining, okay? As a union, and as most unions have been used in the United States, you know, the union sticks together to try to get better benefits for their members, okay? The union thus far has not been greedy. The union has always worked with the City of Brownsville, has always wanted to help the City of Brownsville out whenever it comes time to contract negotiation. You know, since 1994, we still have the same 244 officers, okay? I know that slideshow, 288, but it's 244, give or take two or three in the academy or retiring or something like that. 1994, we had about 133,000 residents in Brownsville, okay? Now, 2019, we have, well, 2017, we had about 183,000 residents. We still have the same 244, plus or minus, officers still working, okay? What the union wants to do is work with the city, okay? The previous contracts that we've negotiated with the city, the city has approached the union asking, will you please work with us during this contract, okay? This contract is important for the city, the city's going through a rough time. Please help us out. We're going to help you out on the next contract, okay? This has happened contractor for contractor, okay? The first, one of the, some of the concessions that we have given to the city was, the city came and asked us, hey, we need you guys to help us out with this. We need you to go from the 8515 insurance to the 820 plan. I said, okay. City said, we'll get you guys next time, we'll help you guys out with your contract on the next time. When the city was going through the fire contract, they were going through a difficult time with them because they had the Me Too clause in there, and they needed for us to give up our Me Too clause, and we conceded, we went ahead and gave that up, all right? At other times, the city was, the city had a study done on employee benefits for the City of Brownsville, for everybody, all the employees. The city found out that they were underpaying some of their employees by a bit, and again, they came to the union and said, hey, can you guys help us out? We're not going to be able to give the employees any kind of raises if we give you all raises. So we said, okay, we're going to work with you guys, we're not going to be greedy like we always have, all right? We did give up the raises for two years on that contract, and previous contract to that, we gave up raises for three years, I believe it was, all right? During that time, our health insurance has gone up a little bit, about 100%, okay? Sure, it's not a lot, what you see over there. We are paying about, we are paying considerably less than the city employees are right now, okay? We're not saying that we're any better, or that we deserve any better insurance. We were just lucky because we are able to have collective bargaining, and together we can try to work out how to get better benefits for us. By taking the insurance plan out of our contract, we lose that capability, and, you know, we want to be able to work with the city so that we can find a better solution, so not only we end up with a better plan, but so that the other employees in the city end up with a better plan. The average police officer does put on about 30 pounds of equipment every day when they go out on patrol, and that's if they're wearing just basic stuff. That's not even plates or anything for a dangerous situation, okay? That takes a toll on our bodies, okay? It's not going to be something that somebody's going to go claiming, I got hurt. It's not going to be something instant, it's something that's going to build up, okay? Our retirees, from the very beginning, have been promised this health insurance, okay? One of the proposals that was proposed by the city was to take them off the health insurance, okay? And that would not be fair. I signed up for this job, just like the rest of my brothers and sisters back there did, to help people that can't help themselves. The retirees can't help themselves anymore. They don't have that collective bargaining. They have us, because we can still fight for them, but it would be something terrible if the city turned their backs on them, okay? The retirees were offered a while back to try to entice them to retire, that they would get the plus-one benefit for their spouse, okay? We don't want to take any of those previous things that were promised to them away from them, okay? If health insurance goes up and we have to follow it, and the retirees have to follow this health insurance that's being proposed, as you all know, these guys are living on a fixed income. They made their money, they put their money away in savings, and they counted on having this. Taking this away from them would be a disservice to them, and it would be a slap in the face. So the union cannot allow for that, and it's not going to be, we won't look favorably on something like that happening to them. We need to work together, and that's what we're here for. The city's going through a lot of positive changes. You guys have been doing a great job. You really have. You guys have been doing a great job. We really have. We've seen the change in the city administration, our administration. The morale that the department has increased, like I have not seen it since I started working there. That, we do thank you all for helping us with that. Department's moving forward. That increase in morale is really helping out people as far as wanting to stay here, as far as wanting to work for the department, doing more than, you know, than what's required, right? So... One of the things that I did tell many of you, as I've spoken to most of you, was that the insurance is something that's very, very important to officers, okay? I've said that from the beginning. We know where, we know that it's getting more and more expensive, but rushing into putting us into a plan right now is something that frankly, we just don't agree with. We've had time to look at other options. There are other options out there. There are some cities that offer some great plans. There are some cities that offer some horrible plans. And I think some of those cities were listed there as not collective bargaining, okay? Brownsville's police officers have always been professional. We've always worked with the city, and we always will, no matter what. But we really, really would like your support on this, so that we can keep this insurance for our members, the 244 police officers that go to work every day to protect the city, okay? The retirees that went to work every day to protect the city. And you've got to remember, these guys, you've got to hand it to them. I've heard stories when these guys started that they were lucky they made some bucks an hour and they started being a cop. And they still did it. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of stuff going on in the country right now, a lot of stuff going on in the state right now, that you guys have heard of. Most people, when something like that happens, would run from the gunfire. All of my brothers and sisters signed up for this, and they are going to run towards the gunfire, and they are going to neutralize or do what needs to be done with what's happening. That comes at a cost, okay? We can get hurt. We can get killed. Our families have to live with that also. They're on this insurance with us as well. Our families have to live with this. I have a police officer that was telling me a story real quick, that, you know, he was in a shooting. Okay? His kids wake up every once in a while, Dad, I'm worried. You know, that's something that most kids, all kids, should not go through something like that. But they do, because of the choices that we've made to be police officers. I've had my kids tell me that every once in a while, especially when they hear about it. Thank God I have not been involved in something like that. But they've asked, why do you do it? Same reason that they do. It's a calling, and we're going to continue doing it. In closing, we respectfully ask that you all discuss this contract proposal we have given to you all. No one's going to be happy. No one's going to walk away winning on this one. But if we work together and the city can help us out on this, I think that we will be able to come up with a solution together. We want to come and work with you all, and we want to be there, just like we always have been. We remain at your service, as always. Do you all have any questions, or anything you'd like to address, or for me to address, or answer?
I have an issue for city staff. So the PowerPoint we saw said that there were 280-something officers?
I think that includes, yeah.
Oh, retirees, okay.
288 in total on that plan.
Okay.
And, Ms. Walker, the city's proposal was, if I understand it correctly, on the retirees, the retirees would continue to have the same health plan that existed for how long? I just want to make sure I understand the retiree portion correctly.
Yes, Mayor, the intention of the city's proposal was to preserve the present language in the collective bargaining agreement, such that it effectively grandfathered the retirees' health benefit in place at the time of separation.
Okay.
And that was one of the proposals that we received. But then again, we also received the other proposal that would take them out. And the other thing is, also, I looked it up on the computer today. You know, the 240-something officers we have, you know, there's some that have been there 40-something years, 30, 25, 10, five, a couple of months. Those that have been there a while have been told, when you retire, you're retiring with this insurance. This insurance will get you to your Medicare, whatever age they end up changing at by the time you retire. Would that take that away from us, or from anybody retiring going forward, since it won't be grandfathered in? So like, for example, the rest of the guys working, 244 officers working, since they haven't retired, would they be still grandfathered in, or would they be excluded if they retired and have to go to this new insurance?
The language is that it's the health plan in effect at the date of retirement. Yes, sir. So, to be fair, what that means is that health plan, one year to the next, even over the three-year contract term, would be different should the city's proposal be effectuated.
And so I have another question. So was there ever, was it ever on the table that they just wanted to preserve the health insurance and leave the pay the same?
It's actually, I was just going to ask.
So is there a 0-0-0, and you keep the current insurance in place? Was that ever offered? Was that ever, is that something that you're asking for?
We've talked to the collective bargaining. We did mention...
I don't think that's actually been a formal offer from either side, because it's in, it's essentially impasse, and from just working with the union, we're both still at the table. I think that's our last-ditch effort there, because we've made some non-fiscal changes to the contract.
We've made a lot of changes to the contract, and we are grateful for those changes.
The Bill of Rights.
The Bill of Rights will prevent what happened with the previous administration from happening again.
So that, yeah, yeah, so that's not been a formal offer. I don't think it's off the table for either side, but I think at this point, we're still trying to work together.
We're still trying to work together.
We're still trying to work together.
Do we know what the economic, I mean, we saw various economic impacts on different models. City's proposal, current police proposal, do we know what that would be if it just stayed where it is now?
No, sir. Those are numbers certainly that we can quantify for the commission, since it had not been a formal offer yet. We had not run those numbers.
And then my next question would be, is it allowed, would it be something, I have asked this for many years in a row, to create somehow a clinic or some type of way to lower the costs that we currently are spending? Because I think there are a lot of ways that we could trim the fat. And so my next question would be, is it thinkable to allow it to stay in impasse while we could work something out that would significantly lower the costs, not only for our police officers' insurance, but citywide?
That would have to be something that would need to be mutually agreed upon by the party. So currently in the contract, if we go to impasse, the second step that either party could invoke would be fact-finding, and then possibly a referendum. So if that was something that would, that's something that the parties want to do, we would really need to do that together.
Yeah.
I don't believe that we're there yet, like I said, because of the non-fiscal changes in the contract. I believe we don't want to lose those. We don't want to lose the work we've, we've... Basically, right now, we're still at the table. We do have a reopener clause. I mean, we're still working on that article, which is Article 29. We do have a reopener clause in that article where we could reopen the contract for health insurance all alone and not touch anything else, but that's still something we're hashing out. We're still negotiating that reopener clause between the lawyers. So I think really, at the end of the day, we're still trying to work a deal.
I have a question. I'm sorry. And I don't know if Sergeant, Lieutenant, Detective...
I'm just a patrol.
Sir. I don't mean to disrespect you by not knowing your title. Are there physical fitness standards for the police officers?
At this time, only the officers coming into the department are subject to the fiscal fitness standards. We are discussing this with the, as part of the contract, to have some of that added to there, and...
So that is one of the new non-fiscal articles, is that we have a fitness policy that the chief wants to impose. And it would be formed through the Labor Relations Committee, so that is an article that we worked on this contract. So that way, the chief can implement some more physical fitness standards with your current members of the union. So right now, the only way we can sort of unilaterally do it is with your entry-level cadets, because they're not, they're not bargaining members. They're not fully civil service. So the only way we can really get that in is through the contract, and we've been able to do that, this contract.
The reason I ask is, of course, healthcare is going up tremendously all over the world, especially the United States. And so a wellness program with fitness standards would help control the cost of that healthcare.
And we agree with you. The chief has come up with some solutions to that and has made some proposals to implement that. And we see that as something positive. As far as how it's going to be put into the contract, I believe it's on a voluntary basis right now, which would be an incentive-based type of a benefit, which many of the officers would probably partake in that. We have looked at other options. You know, we brought the telemed to the table. We spoke about telemed.
Teledoc.
Teledoc, I'm sorry. It's going to be implemented next on October 1st. And that should allow for great savings on that. We also brought to the table that we wanted to have the city educate our members on how to better pick prescription medicine, or generic medicines or prescription medicines, and have choices on that, and they're going to be bringing that on board. We agreed to that.
Right. And another thing is that we, yes, so the city currently has the Health Insurance Committee that overlooks the plan every fiscal year. Since police are, you know, so impacted every year, we've basically given them a seat at the table to be on that committee for the next coming years.
Just really briefly, let me kind of tell you where I'm coming from. I want to help you guys out as much as I possibly can. Mario, I've known you for years. Chief, you know, we've become friends, so obviously, highest respect in the world for all of y'all. I just, I want to try and do as much as I can without putting the city in some sort of fiscal position that it's not going to be able to recover from going forward, right? You kind of know where we're at. You, I mean, even with what we've offered up to this point, we're still looking at absorbing about $5 million or more, plus whatever the health impact's going to be. I'd like to look at additional ways to maybe have some cost savings on the insurance side going forward, to where you still have a plan that works for you. It just doesn't seem like, and, you know, obviously, there's 900 on the civilian plan, which is city employees and firefighters. And they've, up to this point, you know, they don't have collective bargaining, so their health insurance, they're, they're taking a big hit on health insurance this year because of where we are. And, you know, they're absorbing it. The city's going to absorb it. I know you guys have, just based on the offer you've made, are absorbing some of that. It just doesn't seem like we're there to where we've got something that's going to work for everybody yet. I think I really want to try to continue to explore it, like I said, as much as we possibly can do without, you know, hurting ourselves for a really long time going forward. So I know that you all have been working on it. I appreciate everything you've done so far to get to where you're at. We're almost there, I think, although I don't see that we're quite there yet. And, but I would like to see where, what the fiscal impact would be if, if the health insurance stayed the same. I still, I mean, I'm not, I kind of like to see even COLA increases. I think that everybody, you know, that's kind of par for the course for the most part, but I kind of want to see some more of the numbers as far as where this is going to land with different offers. And we don't have that.
And on my end, I just want to, you know, congratulate you both for doing what you're doing. And I know that there's good, productive communication between both of you. Your body posture, you know, really reflects that. And, and I also have that question as well. I mean, can we still look at more options as well? You know, try to avoid the impasse and see, do we still have time to come up to somewhere where it's beneficial, win-win for both instead of lose-lose, so...
And I understand where you're coming from. We're coming up to the October 1st. We come out to October 1st, which is the end of our contract. At that point, we need to see what options we're going to be able to exercise at that point. Again, I'd have to defer to our legal to find out what options we have at that point.
Sure. And I know Craig, Craig Dietz does a good job also. I've known him for a long time. Just really quickly, if we do, if we are in an impasse, then everything would just stay the same? Am I correct in...
Correct, unless one party decides to invoke the next step in the impasse article. So, so yes, he's correct that October 1st is the end of this contract term. However, the Brownsville contract does have a two-year evergreen. So we don't lose everything we've worked for, for the past, you know, 10, 15 years. And if we did come to a deal after October 1st, it can be retroactive to October 1st. So, I mean, that, I mean, we're still willing to come to the table and still willing to negotiate. Right now, you have an action item on the agenda for you to either accept the B P O A's most final offer or reject their most final offer, and it's only limited to the health and the corresponding base pay. It's not the whole contract yet. That's not before you yet.
And just to clarify also, we still need to take this to our membership. The reason we brought it up to you first was because, at this point, based on what was, what has been offered, this would be the bare minimum that we could accept at this time and take back to the membership, knowing that, you know, we hopefully would get a favorable vote from them, again.
Wait, your offer has not, has not been approved by your membership?
It has not been ratified.
And the city's offer, counteroffer, has not even been presented to your membership, then?
No, ma'am, because we know that, from speaking to most of our members, we know that they would not accept it. They will not go to the civilian plan just like that. They will not put the retirees out on, on something like that either.
It's like lawyers. You had a certain level of authority going into the negotiation, and if you need to change that.
We didn't want to go take something to them and have them reject it and reject it and reject it. But we knew that we wanted to bring it to you all, to present to you where we're at. One of the biggest things that I get reminded from many of the older officers is, you know, how many times we've been at the table, how many times we've been promised, we're going to get you next time. One of the examples, I was joking around with the guys, is that we feel like Lucy and Charlie Brown, holding a football.
So were they presented with the city's offer about not touching the retirees?
Yes, that was our, that was our most reason.
The union was?
Yes, yes.
They showed us that as a final one?
Because you keep saying leaving them out. Would that be enough, according to our offer?
Well, the offer on that one was to not leave them out, but to go to the city's plan within how long?
So we would leave the, we would leave the article language exactly the same? So that language in that, in that article would stay the same, which basically states that the plan that the retiree retires on is what he'll keep until he hits 65. So our city's offer is a three-year contract, the first year being 250, the second year being 650, and the third year being that they ride with civilians. So if a police officer retires in the first year, he stays at 250 until he's 65.
But the current retired officers would not be affected, right? Because they retired under a previous plan.
Right, right.
At this point, you have to move that on the final.
It would affect future retirees.
Future retirees after year two and three.
Right, after, yeah, after year two.
I just feel like more can be done in the sense of cutting down on prescription costs and things like that. And I feel like that's where we're tripping ourselves up, and estimating the $5 million impact when there are things to do to bring a decent offer to both sides. That's what's bothering me. I don't want to cut anybody off, because it's being miscalculated when there are things that should have been in place before that weren't, that we can put in place now by having a clinic or other cost-saving measures that are out there, and everybody else does them except us. And so I just don't think the officers should have to pay, because we're not exploring these options.
And those options are currently being explored, but not right now. They will take time.
Yeah, and I think city staff is aware and is already exploring that. It's just my understanding is going to take a while to get to that point on the savings on the healthcare cost, unfortunately.
And that's the part that we're afraid of, that it is going to take a while to get to there. We've known for five years we're getting to there, you know? And we're just concerned that by having to wait, we're going to be using up our two ever-year green, or evergreen years. And we just want to make sure that, again, officers are protected, retirees are protected. And, again, we're just asking that, that the city consider what we're offering at this point and maybe buy us those extra two years, so that we can start looking at this. We are looking at this proactively. We have looked at several plans as well. San Antonio has a great plan. Corpus Christi's actually looking at a really good plan. Some of the other cities don't have great plans. But, you know, those with collective bargaining have had incentives on both sides. But, you know, those with collective bargaining have had incentives on both sides to go look into some great plans. And that's what we're hoping to, to, to continue doing.
Alright, and do I have any motions?
I'm sorry, what, what did the item leave?
So right now, your action item is to either reject or accept the BPOA's most final offer on health and base only.
So if we accept, can we still ask them to go back and lower the cost?
Well, if you accept, you'd be accepting their final offer. If you reject, you can reject it as well and encourage us to go back to the table. It, it's basically either reject or accept their final offer.
Does this final offer have a re-opener?
This final, no, this is just the fiscal, so it's not really teeing the article, it's just the fiscal component.
And if we reject, then everything stays the same, they continue to have the healthcare covers they have. They're not gonna get any raises for now, but we still go back to the table and we try and figure something out.
We can definitely still go back to the table. One of the things that their lawyer Craig Dietz said was after this meeting to give him a call, so...
Well, based on that then, and this is no disrespect to y'all, but I really wanna go back to the table and I wanna try and make sure you continue to keep the healthcare you have now, at least for the foreseeable future, so I would make a motion to reject the proposal based on that.
I'll second, so, and with the condition that you guys go back to the table and try to come up with a, with a solution.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, those opposed?
May.
Okay. You guys keep working, please, thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn, a second?
Sorry.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Stand to adjourn.